I'll rise for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Fontanis?
Here.
Councilman Henderson?
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Ethan?
Here.
Councilwoman Suozas absent. Councilman Stax is absent. Mayor Cohen?
Here.
Okay, so we have draft unapproved minutes. The regular meeting of the city council held November 8th and the special meeting held on November 15th. Have there been any comments, any changes? Any changes that people want to suggest? I may have a motion.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we have a great pleasure. That is Robin Jovanovic, after many years of publishing the Rye Record and establishing a newspaper that helped create in Rye a terrific sense of individuality and community and succeeded in chronicling the adventures and misadventures of all of us over the years, has decided to move on to other things. And the city really owes her a debt of thanks. And so, Robin, if you'd come up, there's a small token of our appreciation.
There's always been a problem because our deadline night is the same night as the city council.
But somehow you always did it.
Yes.
So, you're very welcome. If there's anything you'd care to say, you're welcome to vote in.
Well, I would say one thing that I really mean sincerely, that it's not always our job to get along with one another, but I have a lot of respect for what you do, the way you do it. And we're all just volunteers. I make that point all the time because running a community newspaper is not exactly...you know, Jeff Bezos and you don't travel in the same circles. But I have really enjoyed it. And about 27 years ago, I said to Dolores Ayler, who founded the paper, "You know, I don't really think we're doing a good job covering the city council." So that was the first mistake, but it's been fun, exciting, and I really wish you well. Okay?
Thank you.
Josh, I just want to thank the city council for honoring Robin in this fashion because I think it was something she well deserved, and I think you guys did a good job. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna move up our budget discussion because I'm at least under the impression that it will be brief. And we have personnel here to support us in this, and our discussion of nursery field may be longer. And so, in the interest of letting those personnel move along, I'm going to take up item six, proposed budget discussion.
So, just to remind the council and the residents, the proposed 2024 budget was introduced early in November. There is a public hearing set on the budget for December 6th, which will be next week's meeting. If there are questions or changes or amendments that the council wishes to make to the budget tonight, you can do so, and you can do that with a simple majority, or majority of the whole council, I guess it would be four of you regardless. Once we open the public hearing on December 6th, it's a supermajority to make changes or amendments to the budget. So, this is an opportunity for you to ask questions or make any changes now. But again, we'll have the public hearing starting next week, and that'll continue on to December 20th.
Anyone have any concerns or changes to propose? I think that silence is a testament to the work that you, Greg, have done, and you, Joe, as well, and thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, so to public comment on the city's potential project to replace an existing grass athletic field with a synthetic turf field on a city-owned property located at 421 Milton Road in the city of Rye, and perhaps council discussion of the related environmental statement and CAF. Originally, we had given notice of this as a public hearing, but it turned out that the law does not require the formality of a public hearing for the project contemplated and the nature of the actions to be taken. However, we have been, over months now, flooded with inquiries about nursery field and emails about nursery field from really both sides of the question. And I think it's clear that within the community of Rye there are certainly two different, at least two different points of view. I think it's important that we, as a council, hear from people directly rather than through email for those who care to speak here. And I think it's also important that residents, neighbors, all hear from each other. And so, I have a bundle.
Mr. Mayor, before we hear from the public, I was just wondering if we could maybe discuss what we think the timing is going to be, and what are the steps that we need to take going forward to consider whether or not we want to do this project? And, you know, I think it would be helpful to the public to know where we are, what needs to be done, and be helpful to me because I'm not sure I know, you know, when we're planning on voting on what.
Can I just want to add to that, because you see all the people that are here, and I have to say, even I have been a little confused, and I've walked through this a lot. So, two things. One, can we just confirm why this is not a public hearing? Because we had passed...I just want the public to have absolute transparency in this process because it's clearly a fraud issue.
Sure. So, my recommendation was that there be some format for public comment to be heard. Typically, it can be done in a public hearing fashion. In this case, you are not required to have a formal public hearing. You did take a vote. It was noticed as a hearing, but you are not required. It's not legislation that requires a hearing. It's not a required hearing under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. So, it is not a requirement. You can have a hearing. You can also just entertain public comment.
Is it better to have a hearing or not have a hearing?
It's...
What's the advantage of one over the other?
The difference, the only difference is that a hearing, it is contained.
We can't hear you in the audience virtually at all. If you could speak up, that would help. Or turn off the microphone. You have microphone.
Sorry about that.
So, the only formal difference between a hearing and a public comment period is a hearing, when it's legally required, you have to provide certain types of notice depending on what action you're taking, if it's legislation, if it's under SEACRA or something else. Here, that is not the case, so there was no formal public notice required of it. Otherwise, a hearing is a contained timeframe for the public to be heard. You can certainly contain public comment in a similar way. It's just, it's really more form over substance.
So, we're going to be reviewing the SEACRA document, right?
The city council as the lead agency must review the environmental assessment form before any significance determination is made under SEACRA.
And does that require a public hearing?
No.
Does not?
The nursery field action, for lack of a better term, does not require any hearing at any point in time. It was, I think it's prudent to allow for at least public comment, given the interest, but there is no formal public hearing required at any point during this process.
And I just want to make sure, in terms of what we're doing tonight, that we received the planning commission's formal memo, and there has been no public hearings around that. So, I think, Mr. Mayor, I think the idea of looking at this tonight makes a lot of sense because it's been months, and for the public to look at and hear us speak about this would be crucial. But I know we're waiting on more documents, right, Greg, as far as the environmental assessment process, right, that we do not yet have. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, just so people understand, it is really complicated.
What are we waiting for? Greg, what documents are we waiting for?
Well, what I mean by that is that from a process standpoint, if you wanted, if the council wanted to advance the project further and go actually through a determination of a POSDEC or a NEGDEC, there is additional documentation for that purpose that you go through.
Right.
But in terms of the review at this point, there's no other documents as part of this at this stage.
Right.
So, Mayor Cohen, just trying to put a loop around all of this, and just, again, for clarity, I think where we started, I'm not sure I care whether we do a hearing or public comment. Either way, the public will be heard, and I think that's really important for, as you said in your opening. So, the question I have, though, aligns with what Councilman Henderson raised, which is, if we could just get sort of a roadmap, because we talk about this phase, this stage, but like my other colleagues, or two of them anyway, I'm not sure where we are in the phases and stages, and it seems like there's four issues before us. One is the environmental side of this, and that has had a lot of attention recently. The other is, what is the financing arrangement? That has a lot of questions and open items to it. One is the broader issue of the neighborhood itself and the character of the neighborhood. And the last, and these are not in a particular order, but I think the genesis has to really do with discussion of our planning for adequate play space. And I'm separating that out because I think that's, while it maybe is embedded in this whole project, I think it's a very critical item for many people. And so, I would just like to know how we're going to take ourselves through all of these items in a discussion, and how we're going to have the community have an opportunity to speak to these. Will they just speak to all of them at once? Or are we covering environmental tonight, and then maybe the business deal at a later time? Or how you see that playing out and over what period of time?
Just to be a little more specific, too, what are the decision points here? Are we...
Yeah.
There's environmental approval, then there's accepting a gift, if that's what we're going to do, then there's approving a project, and then there's approving bids. Those are four different actions that I see. I don't understand when we're planning on doing that, what the schedule is going to be, and what the process is going to be. I think it's important that the public knows that, so that the public has a chance to weigh in at the appropriate time. So, and we have a whole new council coming on board in January 1, and I think it's important, you know, that they're involved in this, too, because I don't think these things are all going to happen, or I don't think they should happen before January 1. So, those are my questions about the process.
I'm going to defer to Kristin, other than to say that we have before us an EAF and a CAF in draft form. We have favorable engineers' reports and all the makings for a NEGDEC. And I'm hoping that we're going to see a draft NEGDEC for our first meeting. But how we get to the rest of the process afterwards really hasn't been mapped.
Sure. So, just kind of go through the necessary steps to advance the project. Once you have heard public comment, you do, as the lead agency, again, you have to review the environmental assessment form and the coastal assessment form, the EAF and the CAF. You've had those. Those are the same forms that the planning commission had before it. They reviewed both those forms as well. But you do, these are your forms as the lead agency. So, you are able to review those. They are ready now to be reviewed. Once you are finished reviewing those, you are required to make a significance determination.
But that's one decision point?
That's one decision point. And that is either a negative declaration, or in some instances, it's a positive declaration. You also have to make an...
When do we plan on doing that? Do we have a plan for when we're going to do that?
Well, and also, aren't we getting more documents on that before?
So, the negative declaration, I believe, will be ready for council consideration in December, whether you choose to take that up on December 6th or the 20th. That's your prerogative. What you have to do before you consider a negative declaration is finish your review of the EAF. You are required to do that. And there are three different parts to that.
So, that review is on the 6th or the 20th?
That's up to you.
Yeah, if we choose to do it.
Correct. You also have to review the CAF and make an LWRP consistency finding. The planning commission was required to give you their advisory opinion. That is before you, as well as a wetland advisory opinion. But that is what the planning commission was required to do with respect to the LWRP. So, you'll have to make a consistency determination as well. So, whether you consider that one step or two steps, those two decisions must be made to advance the project. After that, as the mayor mentioned, it hasn't really been mapped out. My understanding is, at some point in time, there may be a consideration of an acceptance of a donation, and then you will have to award bids.
Do we have to decide on the project before we accept the donation? Or, I mean, does it donate...I mean...
I think, Bill, we've been told by the donor group that unless there's a positive statement by the council with respect to doing the project, and I assume they're going to demand specificity with respect to the project, there won't be a donation.
Well, I mean, but we don't know how much the project is going to cost, and we don't know how much money is going to be donated. So, how do we do that until we know those things?
And will it be in a contract form? How will that work?
Okay. I mean, and these are all granular within each category. We are going to have, and actually have, a reasonable estimate in terms of the cost of the field, right? I mean, that's part of the design, and I'm not saying down to the penny, but there's a general understanding of cost, and that can be provided. You know, the council, if it so chooses at some future date, is required to accept a donation for a specific project. So, that would be part of, you know, this decision-making process. But there is going to be and will be provided a cost estimate for the 60% design that we currently have in hand.
So, on that, I just, I mean, to your question about whether there's a piece of paper, I haven't seen a piece of paper, not even talking about a contract, not even a memo, outlining what the terms are. I think there are a lot of assumptions, but they're varying as to how this gets paid for, how it gets maintained, how it gets replaced in 10 years, at what point does the private donation stop, and at what point does it become a public responsibility? That's all neutral as to whether we want the project or not. That's just the regular kind of fair question is to...and it's an unpleasant question because, you know, you don't want to look a gift horse in the mouth, but that's what I'm doing because that's our job, is to find out what are the terms? What is the donor proposal? And I just haven't seen that, again, in writing. I don't mean in a contract. I just mean even in a memo or bullet points, just saying, here's what we're all talking about. And I haven't seen that in any kind of form for the council.
Did you get it, Greg? Did you get a...did you get a document?
I don't, I don't, I'm sorry. I don't, I mean, Matthew, they may have sent it.
We sent it in June. You asked for it in June. I remember.
Oh, okay. I haven't seen it. I remember you being here in June and talking about it, and that was helpful. And we met afterwards, and we talked some more about it, and that was helpful. But I haven't seen anything laying that out, and I don't even care who prepares it. I just want to see it. I just, I feel like we're talking around something, and maybe it's, you know, the bane of my profession as a lawyer, but we always seem to have documents and paperwork and an abundance of it here. I would just be happy with a cocktail napkin, for starters, at least.
And now, and we've talked in a couple of meetings about the diligence of the group, and I have, I've met with the group several times. It is, they have created a 501(c)(3), originally as a piggyback to the original 501(c)(3) with, and that is being amended. There are articles...
That's in place now, the 501(c)(3).
I don't know if the new name is in place, Josh, or not. I know that they have represented that they can collect under the original 501(c)(3). There are articles of incorporation. There are conflict limitations. There are officers of the organization. The last meeting that I had with the group, my recommendation or suggestion to them, and the problem or the challenge with this is that, you know, the concept of doing due diligence on a conceptual fundraise for the, you know, for the financing of the field is difficult. I can tell you that there are, you know, there's a list of pledges, there is a total that's provided, there are articles of incorporation, there's a 501(c)(3), but there is no money in an account. So, one approach that I discussed with the user group and could put, you know, put forth to you is that the project would not be advanced any further beyond whatever the regulatory approvals are that are required today until such time as there is a sufficient amount of money and an account that is being prepared in which to donate to the city. And only upon that, only upon that donation and its acceptance would the city then proceed with bids to construct the field.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're proceeding appropriately and that we're not committing the city to something before we take all the steps that we need to make sure, one, that the environmental approvals are right, two, that we agree we want to accept the donation and do the project, and, three, that they have the money to do the project, and we know what it's going to cost, and then that we can stop the project if we go out to bid and we don't like the bids. I think we need to be able to control it the whole way through, and that's what I'm concerned, that we don't just rush through this and say we're doing a project. We need to be able to stop at any point along the way to make sure we're protecting taxpayers' money.
And I just want to say one more thing because so many people are here, which is fantastic. I think there's been some misunderstanding about where we actually are, and I know I've spoken to staff and others about this, but the consequential vote on this, despite the emails that we're still getting, and we're getting lots of emails, was in June, right? So, that was a key vote for this project. At this point, there are certain things that we will have to, and I completely concur with my colleagues, that we have a huge fiduciary responsibility here, and we have a process responsibility, environmental responsibilities that are laid out in the law. But in terms of us deciding one way or the other, that ship, for the most part, sailed. So, what we are looking at here is going through, and that's why we're trying to be very careful, very transparent about this process so that people aren't hurt, people do get it, and that we get the best feedback from consultants, from you guys, from staff that we need to do this right.
But I don't think that's true. I think we can stop the project whenever we want it.
You can stop, you can stop the project. You'd have to go through that process as well. But I'm saying, people think that we are at, six months ago, where we're still debating over a synthetic turf field or not, right? That's all I'm saying, as far as this project is concerned.
No, I think, I think all we...
If you want to kill the project, that's a different action.
I think all we agreed on in June...
Was to take it further.
Was to do some studies and send it to planning. I don't think there was any agreement in June...
Kristin, could you speak to that?
As to what we were doing. I mean, the resolution just said that we would spend $150,000 of taxpayer money on investigating some of the environmental issues, and that money was spent, and those reports were obtained, and it was sent to planning. That was as much as the resolution said. The resolution didn't say we were or weren't doing it, and so that, I think the comments that we're here to listen to today have to do with all of the issues, which are not just the environmental, but also what is the deal? What is the neighborhood impact? What is, you know, is this something that the city wants to do? I don't think the ship has sailed at all. I think we're at a discussion point, which is good. That's what we're supposed to be doing, and I'm supportive of us having that discussion. I do, I do want to come back to the diligence, though. So, let's leave aside the 501(c)(3). I assume that that exists. I haven't found it, but it doesn't matter. The articles, all of that. If it isn't there yet, I'm sure it eventually will be. It's a lengthy, torturous process to set up, but, so assuming that's all in place, what are the business points? Assuming X dollars is the cost, I'm assuming that's around $3 million is what we're still talking about?
Yes, somewhere in that neighborhood.
So, if we could just have clarity among us here so that we're not confused in the discussion, it's $3 million that the donor group is going to fund 100%, assuming they like the project?
That's correct.
And does that reimburse us the 300-ish thousand, too?
The $3 million in rough numbers would take care of the soft cost spent to date.
Good.
So, that's installation and the work we did getting...
Correct.
The 290 we've spent already.
Correct.
Okay. And then what is the arrangement, if there is one, for annual maintenance and then when the field expires?
Well, I think the more, the field replacement is the more expensive or the more critical of the two. The annual maintenance, relative to the annual maintenance on the field today, is not demonstrably different. The more important question would be, you know, a field replacement, whether that's in 10 years, 12 years, 18 years. But there's been no agreement or no business conversation with regard to how that's going to be replaced. There are some options, whether it be the donor group or through some other mechanisms to pay for a replacement field.
So, right now, the only expectation, and this isn't a criticism, it's just for clarity, is $3 million to get us to an installed field. And then after that, it's the city's responsibility to maintain it, ensure it, and then replace it in eight, 10, 12, 18, depending on many factors that impact the life of these things, sometimes... depending on many factors that impact the life of these things. Sometimes they last shorter than hoped for or longer than expected.
Correct.
Okay. I just think that's important for everyone to have, be very clear. Thank you.
So, and I really do want to hear Kristen's answer, please.
Sure. So the resolution that this council adopted in, in June, the way I can best characterize it is a, it was, is a necessary step to advance the project. The council at that time, as part of that resolution, said to staff, you want the planning commission to review a synthetic turf field, at nursery field, and once the application is, I'll say complete, but complete enough for that review to occur, send it to the planning commission. So that was done. The planning commission reviewed the synthetic, synthetic turf field request.
I'm sorry, Kristen, to interrupt, but it was to authorize payment to different new consultants to study all the impacts that the public wanted addressed, environmental and flooding and so on and so forth. So that's the money when, the money doesn't go to the planning commission, the money goes to the consultants that they perform the studies, and then they come back with their results, and then they present. And they presented these documents, and then they presented to the planning commission.
Correct. The, the resolution did also indicate the, authorize the expenditure of money so that the application could be deemed by staff complete. And that did include several studies included their review and opinion, if you will, on the EAF and the CAF as well.
Right. And it was only that, and again, I'm not taking a side on this one way or the other. It's, this is really about process. And the staff assured me that this was what happened, and it was just about the synthetic turf field, although I noticed that the planning commission did, in fact, in addition, entertain some other options. So they were extraordinarily thorough in that as well.
Correct. Yes.
So that's all, that's all just, again, process because there's been so much confusion. Thank you, Kristen.
So, Mr. Mayor, so what's the expectation after tonight for this project? When do you plan on having a vote on the secret thing in that, the next meeting? And, and when, when, when do we have the next vote to accept the gift and, and approve the project? And then the biddings, do we, we don't have any bidding documents. We haven't bid anything out yet, right?
Well, there's no need for accepting any gifts if we don't go through with the, you know, going through the EAF and the CAF.
Yes, of course.
Right, so we just, one at a time.
So I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll complete the secret process and CAF process in December, either at the December 6th or December 20th meeting. I don't have, as I said at the outset of this conversation, I don't have a plan for what comes after that. I will think hard on it, but so far have not. If we can--
Do we want to talk about this after we hear public comments? Or are we going to wait and do it all together at the, when you're ready to talk about the rest of it?
Yeah, we don't have anyone from the planning, well, we do, of course, have Carolina, but--
We have a voting member. Christian Miller's in the back, so he can answer also any questions you may have.
Yeah.
Can we have Christian come up?
But, well, no, no, let's, let's hear from the public.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's hear from the public.
Douglas Carey, 860 Forest Avenue. Doug, welcome. Erwin General will follow our three-minute convention, but if people want to continue past, then just honoring others' desire to speak, waiting until the end, and then coming up again, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council, city staff, members and residents of Rye. We have seen and heard on multiple occasions the number of days that have been so-called lost because of either poor drainage or rainfall that stayed. I've heard different reasons, but as a New York State coach for over 40 years and teacher, we have to observe very strict guidelines on the heat index. And I was wondering, with all the presentations that I have heard over the last couple of years on this issue, how come we haven't included the number of days, especially this past summer, that were practices or games were lost on different fields because of the temperature? Some plastic surfaces in this area here in July and August can reach 130, 135 degrees. And the heat index for the state of New York for youth and high school age athletes and sanctioned events is very strict, and it begins in the 90 degrees for air temperature. We have benefited from generations of responsible land stewardship in this area formerly known as Peningo, Town of Rye, Village of Rye, and City of Rye. From the caretakers of the Siwanoi and the Monhegans to Peter Disbro, the Havelin family, John Billington, James Davenport, William H. Bowles, to Congresswoman O'Day, legislator Wainwright, our councilwomen, Edith Reed, Beth Griffin Matthews, Pat Levine, Catherine Parker, Rozlar, and Ed Granger, Bill Ball, Tom Butler, John Carey, George Latimer, Duncan Henness, Jerry Sykes, to council members Stack, Johnson, Henderson, Fontanas, Kohn, and Southee, and to now council members-elect Jensen and Cunningham. All have had, and you have and will have, the task to do on a daily basis what was, is, and will be best for all Rye residents, current but especially future. We implore you to act responsibly as opposed to rapidly, to analyze all the short and long-term benefits, not only for current residents and future residents, but also for our fragile estuary and environment.
Doug?
I ask you to do what is best for now in 2023, 2043, 2053. If I have run out of time, I apologize, but--
Doug, Doug, please.
--your decision is crucial to our present and our future.
Thank you. Erwin Lefkowitz.
I live at 38 Oakwood Avenue. I've been a resident of Rye for well over 50 years, and I'm very concerned about the installation of a plastic turf field in a flood zone with a steep wall on one side. And I think that's a real consideration that should be, should be in every council member's mind. I'm familiar with artificial turf fields. I put the first one in in Westchester County back in the 1970s, and the most recent one was in the 2000s at Bakerfield at Columbia University. And I know the hazards that are involved and the extraordinary amount of preparation work that has to be done beforehand. And I don't think this site is capable of being properly drained, especially when, as I have seen, the water comes spewing out of the manhole covers to a height of five or six feet. And it's just not the right place to do it, and I'd like you to please keep that in mind when you take this project under consideration. Thank you.
Caitlin Colvin.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor Kohn, Rye City Council members, thanks as always for your service. You've heard me up here before, but I'm here again to advocate in strong support of the Nursery Field Improvement Project. While Rye is a trailblazing community in many ways, we're severely lacking in durable field space compared to neighboring towns. These towns have found ways to use safe synthetic turf to expand playable space for their kids. Now it's Rye's turn. After four-plus years of discussing this project, the independent consultant reports are clear that the project will not have an impact, adverse impact on wetlands surrounding historic properties and will not increase runoff, peak runoff rates to the site. My husband and I have lived in Rye for 12 years. We've seen devastating flooding that has impacted our friends and neighbors. We would not support any project that would exacerbate that problem. We're relying on the independent reports that city staff has commissioned. We're putting our trust in the process and our city representatives. This process has now included numerous city council public hearings and debates and three planning commission meetings in the last two months alone. It's time to listen to the data and the science and move this project forward. I'm the mom of a 12-year-old boy at Rye Middle School. 12's a tough age. He can't drive. He can't get a job. Everybody thinks you're always causing trouble. How do many 12-year-old boys in Rye fill their time? They meet their friends at one of our amazing local establishments like Jerry's Post Road Market for a chicken cutlet sandwich. Then they grab their friends and they go play. They have a catch. They throw a football. They grab a lac stick. I'm sure many of you have driven in the, by the high school turf on any given day, even in the freezing cold, and you've seen children playing. Rye's grass fields will soon be closed to rest until the spring, limiting outdoor group activity to the Rye High School turf. Let's give the kids an additional durable play space to get outside on a year-round basis. Let's get them outside playing with friends and away from screens and video games. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Suzanne Clary.
Thank you to everyone tonight, on both sides of the table who are, who are working hard to solve this. My daughter and my son played soccer in Rye. They learned how to run fast, and those fields were made of grass. They weren't made of synthetic turf. My daughter went on to use her running skills to become the two-time varsity captain of squash at Amherst, the first female captain of their team. She honed those skills in Rye. Not running on a synthetic turf did not hurt her chances at going to college or excelling in a sport. So I just want to open with that. It's really important to know, what is Rye known for? Rye is known for the Knapp House, which now is the oldest house in Westchester County and possibly one of the oldest in the New York State that will be featured in 2026 as we celebrate the sesquicentennial of our independence. Are we really going to have people going back in time to imagine the revolution, to imagine a time of freedom and independence, and be standing on an elevated commercial structure as they look at the Knapp House? The Rye Historical Society submitted a letter, I believe today or yesterday. They were not asked to be part of the secret process. This is critical. October 10th, all right? They are most impacted by this elevated commercial structure. Are we going to sacrifice our legacy as the, the stewards of the oldest revolutionary site in Westchester and one of the oldest in, in New York State and one of the oldest in the country for a soccer field when no other sites have been considered? I saw a study today that is about nursery field. Where are the studies for every other possible site in Rye? I don't see them. This was supposed to be about considering all sites in Rye, and there is one report. I'm a parent. I'm a historian. I am really tired of sitting at dinners, I've got 33 seconds left, of the in-and-outers. And I'm going to put it out there. People who are in Rye for, what is an in-and-outer? Hi, I'm here for five years. I'm here for six years. I'm only here for four years. Do you know what that means? I'm here to get my kids into college. They will be in the Rye school system for a set period of time, and then I'm leaving these expensive taxes behind because I don't want to be part of this community. I've lived in this community for 31 years. I am proud of this community. I am proud of our history, and I hope you consider grass, which I do not see a report for on that table. Thank you so much for your attention.
Gavin Mullenelli.
Hi, everybody. Mayor, City Council, thank you all for, for your time. I live at 27 Island Drive. I'm a parent of four children, and I coach a number of different Rye town sports teams. I believe it's very important for the children of Rye to have more fields that can be used year-round. I've seen firsthand the detrimental effects that the lack of field usage has on both the kids and the parents of this town. Our one turf field at the high school primarily serves the high school students. The kids of this town, on the other hand, are forced to play on fields that are closed most of the year, and when they are open, a combination of the wear and tear, along with even the slightest rain, makes many of them unusable for days at a time. Nursery field is particularly incredibly underutilized. Nursery field is closed for approximately six months out of the year. When it is open, even during the spring and fall seasons, the slightest rainfall results in canceled practices for days. A third-party report from 2018 stated that 40% of nursery field programming was canceled or relocated due to unplayable conditions that year. This fall season seemed even worse, with Rye youth soccer canceling practices six out of seven weeks in a row due to rainfall, with many of these practices moved last minute to turf fields in surrounding towns. The issues at nursery have resulted in Rye youth soccer scheduling the overwhelming majority of its games and practices at other turf fields in Stepanak and Rye Country Day. In fact, on Sunday, which is the day most of the Rye youth soccer teams play their games, nursery field sits completely empty because of the risk that the games will be canceled last minute. In addition, it costs a substantial amount of money for Rye youth lacrosse and soccer to rent out fields in other towns for our kids to play. Currently, Rye youth soccer and Rye youth lacrosse pay approximately $150,000 per year, $150,000 per year to rent out fields in other towns at approximately $200 an hour. A quick analysis suggests that even if you just move the Sunday soccer games and some Rye youth lacrosse practices on Saturday, that would save $50,000 a year. Not only does it cost a lot of money for our town programs to rent these fields, but it also comes with the risk of losing those fields. Rye youth lacrosse predominantly has to use SUNY Purchase to host its practices for boys and girls travel across. Just recently, SUNY Purchase informed Rye youth lacrosse that would no longer have access to their fields for weekend practices. There are 750 boys and girls that do Rye youth lacrosse-- There are 750 boys and girls that do Rye Youth Lacrosse, 500 of them between 3rd and 8th grade that are in travel. Currently, they do not have a place to practice on the weekend. That is because we do not have enough field space for the boys and girls of this town. The City Council has the ability to change that. You've now hired two independent engineering consulting firms who have said that the project will not increase flooding and it will not result in any additional environmental issues. You have the Rye Rec that has unanimously supported Nursery, and you have the Planning Commission that has unanimously supported this project. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everyone for all the hard work that's gone into the project thus far. I would like to go on the record stating that I'm against installing a synthetic turf field at Nursery Field for a number of reasons. I think it's important to keep in mind that this is a non-reversible 10-plus-year decision, and I think that additional due diligence of independent third parties should be performed to evaluate all options and to secure funding before moving forward. First, the amount of due diligence for other sites has been completely absent. In fact, I found only a single document on the Nursery Field project website that consisted of eight pictures evaluating other options. No narrative, simply eight pictures. To me, that's not acceptable. We should be exploring all options. We should have full reports for all different locations in Rye before making a decision. Second, I think many of you are aware that there was an independent study done in 2011 by Woodard and Curran, which basically resulted in Nursery Field being the worst option for Rye. They did evaluate other fields, and Rye Rec was the number-one preferred option, followed by Dispro Park. I quote, "Considering that Nursery Field lies within the 100-year floodplain, and there is more historical evidence of significant wetlands on-site, synthetic turf is not an ideal option for the site. There is increased risk of damaging the turf system due to potential flooding and potential sediment." And the last point I wanted to make is, I think the funding is very important to have straight before moving forward and also having a clear line of sight of what happens 10 years from now when we need to replace the field. Is that coming out of taxpayer dollars, or is that going to be funded by some other resource? So in closing, I think it's important for the city to hire an independent consultant that is not involved in the Synthetic Turf Council to evaluate all options and issue full reports on the different sites, and for the city to clarify exactly where the funding is coming from for the initial project as well as the replacement of the field. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Asher Elberry, and I live on 702 Forest Avenue. I support the project with getting a new turf, as it will not only benefit lots of kids, as they'll have a lot more space to play on, we will also have more time to play, and we'll be able to play more times than not. As parts of the year, we are not able to play since it's either too cold out and/or it's been rained out and we're not able to play for three or four days as it's super muddy. And, yeah, so if you get a turf field, it'll reduce the amount of times that we are delayed and will cause us to not only be able to play more often, but increase our mental health as we're not spending more time indoors playing on our devices, and we'll be able to play outside and get our practices in. There's countless times where I see lots of our kids playing on our school turf at RMS, and I'm just thinking, why can't the kids be playing somewhere else? Why can't people be playing, like, at Nursery or just any other place? And the reason that people are just playing at that turf is because it's a turf field and we don't have that many other options, and it's just the most viable thing to do. And if we had another turf field, it would really open up a lot of other alternatives. So to conclude, I feel like we should get a turf field as it allows to play more often and get out more.
Hi, my name is Amelia Elberry. I live in Rye, and I play lacrosse on the Nursery Field. This field is closed for four months or more a year, and we are only able to use this field for the remaining months. Many times, the field is closed because it's rained out and super wet. Also, if we turf the field, kids will be on their screens less, and we will have more time to go outside and practice. In my opinion, I think we should turf the field so we can play on it longer, and if we don't, me and my team will have to travel farther places to play lacrosse. But if we do have a turf field, we can get to our practices or games safely and on time. I live close to Nursery Field, and it would be so much better if we had turf. And yes, I know it will cost more, but it will help us kids' physical health and mental health. I hope this town makes the right decision. Thank you.
Another great job. Thank you. James Ward. You have hard acts to follow.
I'm here, James Ward, 50 Raymond Ave, Rye, resident for 12 years. I raised my two children in Rye. And I guess I would like to say that I've been to a lot of these meetings, and I love that people come from both sides, keep the dialogue going, and I understand. I've been kind of, I came to them with an open mind. You know, I'm a coach. I'm a Rye Rangers coach, I'm a hockey coach for seven years. I'm also the Chair of the Rye Sustainability. I support both organizations, and I want people, I want kids to grow up and have healthy lives. I've sat on the sidelines, and tonight I decided to say something because I want to come out against the Nursery Field and developing it and putting in the synthetic turf. And I'm going to try not even to use all my time, but say, I've distilled it into three things. I'm a financial analyst. I work every day looking at numbers, looking at companies, looking at what they're worth, and putting values on. I've not heard a coherent valuation of this project. I've heard donors are going to donate money. That's great, but I don't think that's how you evaluate whether it's good or not. And you first evaluate whether the city needs it, and then you evaluate how you're going to pay for it, and then you figure out whether you can do it or not. I would say I'm very concerned about the run on costs. They haven't been covered. What happens in 10 years? That's one thing. Secondly, this is going to hurt a little bit, but I'm very, you know, I'm very athletically-minded. My son plays hockey. He's played lots of hockey. I haven't heard a compelling argument that says the kids need this field. And the reason is because my kid played 70, 80 extraordinary amounts of hockey. He still does. When he was 13, I could not get him off games. Kids have these things, phones, they're on them all the time. A field is not going to be the solution to that. Thirdly, the environmental impact. Talk to me about flooding. They should be able to assess. Smart people can assess that, but I don't need that because I know how you make a field. I was a chemist. You make it by building polymers. You put those polymers together, and you're going to dump that into one of the most treasured places in the city, tons and tons of plastic. And when it's done, you're going to have to get that plastic out of there and put new plastic in. And anyone that thinks that's good for the kids, I think, I do, well, I'm not going to make it personal, I do not think that's good for the kids. Thank you very much.
Hi, thanks for the time. I'll keep it brief. Thank you guys all for your service. So Chris Watson, live on Bury Court. My wife and I have three children. We've lived here for over 10 years, and we plan to spend decades more here. Our kids simply deserve better. Our grass fields are closed more than they're open, and we need to improve our kids' access to play. I coach lacrosse and soccer here, and I see firsthand the disappointment when we have to tell them their games and practices are canceled again. It is happening way too often, and the last couple of seasons have been worse than ever. Unlike some other sports where there's 50 to 70 games, our soccer teams only get nine to 10 games a season. So when Sundays are washed out three or four times, it creates great chaos, and these kids are counting on these opportunities to play together. Our kids are counting on us all to engage in an intellectually honest discussion. They don't understand why we can't get them better fields. They ask if there's a lot of opposition against this project. We tell them that there are, of course, different opinions on every issue, but 85% of a recent email count to the city were in support of this project, over 100 emails. The Rec Commission and the Planning Commission unanimously support it. In short, there's very broad support for this project. Our kids ask if there are good reasons to prevent it. It's easy to stand up here and make things up, and we owe it to our kids to be intellectually honest in our analysis. I'd like to address just a few of the false things we've heard tonight already. Our kids deserve better, and they deserve an honest discussion. You know, turf has come a long way in the last 30, 40 years. We've had conversations which are on video for everyone to watch, and we encourage everyone to watch it. Princeton's Associate Athletic Director for Construction, he's built their turf fields and grass fields for 30 years, and he very strongly explains why turf fields do not make flooding worse. They absorb tens of thousands of gallons of water. Underneath the turf field is a massive storm-water drainage system. It's come a long way. The idea that the summer heat that was discussed, so our youth sports do not play in the summer, the field closures and the missed opportunities relate to the fall and spring when our grass fields are closed more than they're open. Just in terms of, you know, the flooding and the narrative around that, I think it's also important to note that, you know, in the recent storm, many cars were moved to Nursery Field because it was deemed higher ground and a safer spot for those cars. So I think our kids deserve better. They deserve more chances to play, and we're counting on you guys to continue the process and the discussion. So thank you for your time.
Hi, Allison Relier, 12 Halsted Place. Thank you all for the work that you're doing and for all the hours that you've put in over the last few months especially. First of all, I want to say, my husband and I both love youth sports. Our kids play a lot of sports. My daughter does Rye Youth Soccer, travel team. My sons both do hockey, and my youngest picked up lacrosse over the summer. It's been one of the greatest joys of mine to see him play lacrosse and fall in love with the sport. I played it all through middle school and high school. I love it. It is a fantastic sport, and it is so much fun. And some of the best moments I've had this fall are going with my son and playing lacrosse at Rye Town Park. When other fields are closed for grass and you want to play a pickup game or your kids want to go somewhere to run after school, the top third of Rye Town Park is an open-ball area. That field near Edith Reed is an open-ball area. There are places to go and play unstructured sports. I understand that's different than playing a sport on an organized, you know, having a practice or a game at a field, but I do think we need to be honest about what we're talking about. I agree. And there are places in our beautiful community to go and play pickup games and to get outside and play, and it's wonderful, and we are so grateful, I am so grateful to have those spaces. I wanted to talk about one specific topic that's come up a few times. I think a lot of you know how much I love history. I'm not going to talk about history tonight. I think there's some other people covering history. But as someone who lives sort of near the field and then spends a lot of time right in that neighborhood, I wanted to talk about traffic because traffic was something that came up with the Planning Commission, but the planning wasn't tasked with looking into and that isn't being reviewed in SECR. And I just have some questions based on the years of conversations. So we talked about more frequent peaks maybe, but not higher peaks. But in previous conversations, and this might not be relevant anymore, but in conversations with individuals from Rye Rec, it was noted that this turf field would be so much more usable that some practices would now be moved to this turf field because it can accommodate more teams at a time, the way that it's laid out. So when there's cancellations at some of the other fields, practices may move to Nursery Field, which seems then there might be a higher peak and that that's something we should look at. And then the other point was that some people a couple of years ago mentioned possibility of tournaments, and that being some revenue for the youth sports organizations as well as for the city. Tournaments, I believe, would be played in early summer, and they do function a little differently and do bring more spectators to the sport. So I'm just wondering if anyone on the Council has explored with the current funding group whether or not tournaments would be part of the plan and if that could be outlined because I do think that would necessitate a traffic study in that narrow corridor where we have that light at Playland Parkway where there's not a left-turn signal, and it's very, very hard for people to navigate that neighborhood as it is, and there's a lot of children walking. And I care very much about sports for children, and I care very much about safety for children. So I'm just wondering if we could continue to request a traffic study related to this project. Regardless of what the improvements are, I think it's important to do. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
He may have left. Dan Adler.
Dan Adler, CC2 Elmwood Avenue. Thank you all for your service. I just wanted to address one thing. We've been hearing a lot about four to six months that's not played on that field. That's not going to change whether it's synthetic turf or not, as it was said earlier. The field time is going to remain the same, to my knowledge, and as said in the SECR report as well, that the field time usage will remain the same. Obviously, closures will be less if there's rain because it's synthetic turf, but those months are not going to be gained. Unless that's changed, that needs to be said, but there's no additional months coming to that field. Also, in June, we were told that the planning was to look if this was even viable, not that this was agreed upon. That's what I was told when I have emails saying that, that the planning was to determine if it was even viable to do it. And I think you said the same from up here in the diastome. Okay. I'm writing to ask that, well, I'm repeating an email I sent to you in some context, that no action be taken on Nursery Field until a fair and holistic look at our field challenges and all potential solutions have been thoroughly vetted. The process to this point has been one-sided, narrowly focused, and not representative of the holistic community approach to problem solving that Rye is known for. This is not about denying kids' ability to play on sports fields. Nursery Field is right next to my house. It's a field I coach on. It's a field I hear kids on every day. In fact, many families walk through my driveway to access that field, so I quite literally let kids play. In addition to that, if this field is built, that will no longer be possible because a chain-link fence will be around that field. I want kids outside playing, as does every resident in Rye. I also want to protect our environment, our health, and our neighborhoods, and I believe we can do both. The issue I have is that the process that has landed the city at looking at to construct a plastic carpet in a wetland area surrounded by homes is not the best solution to our field challenges. The city has worked with one specific group on one specific goal since 2019, a synthetic turf field at Nursery. The city has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, taxpayer money, on that objective, including... including hiring a consultant who is a lobbyist for the synthetic turf industry. Looking objectively at what an improved natural grass filled nursery could do will be immensely helpful, as well as looking at other locations, whether they be our CSD properties, private land, shared land with other neighboring municipalities, Rye Rec Field, looking around for other options besides this one insular thing. One last thing I want to talk about also is that PIFAs have been something that's been talked a lot about. There was a document put up by the consultant on the website about PIFAs where it put one report that was put as a study that showed a PIFA-free field up in what they thought was Massachusetts, but it was actually New Hampshire. It's my understanding that this study has been wildly discredited and that two different independent reports have come out to determine that there was PIFA in that field and that it leached into the water and surrounding area. I've sent the council those documents, at least three doctors, PhDs and MDs have sent the council information about concerns about PIFA and it's spread into that very sensitive area of the wetlands. Please take more time, do more diligence and we can work on this together and solve our problems. Thank you very much.
I'm Laura Laura. I'm a certified personal trainer, I also do corrective exercises and injury prevention. I played soccer, I coached soccer for a long time, my husband now coaches my daughter who's nine. My biggest concern is always injury prevention. If I had a choice, I would not have her play on turf. She already plays two days of the week on turf, I love when they're on the grass. I'm in the middle. I am trying to figure this out because I don't want her to lose the games either, but I don't want her having knee injuries at nine and 10 years old. So, and that is a big concern. On the other side, Nursery Field is closed, we've been there, we've had raining out days and the grass is fine, the kids could have played. And we're at Sterling and it's a mud bog and they let us play there. So I guess in double advocate, why isn't Sterling's Field being brought up as an option? Where it's not in someone's backyard, it is, but not close as Nursery Field. I just think there's options of more middle ground for us to be thinking about and yeah, that's it. Thank you guys.
Thank you city council members for your time and service. My name's Andrew Lang, I live at 4 Field Stone Road. I've lived here with my wife Caitlin and our five children for 12 years and we plan to live here for many, many decades to come. There are a number of issues that we've discussed tonight or we've heard tonight, but I just want to discuss one and that's why Nursery Field, that keeps coming up. Why Nursery Field, why aren't we looking at others? The Rye Rec Commission, who's in charge of all the fields in Rye, has stated, after doing their due diligence and their work, that they recommend Nursery Field unanimously. It's the only field big enough, except for Rye Rec Field itself, to facilitate a full-size lacrosse and soccer field. But the problem with Rec is you'd have to move baseball fields, they have the kids' camp and there's some other issues there. Sterling Field is too small. It's not a regulation size. Sterling Field is also in a backyard or in a neighborhood. Gagliardo and Disbro, either too small or you'd have to move baseball fields. Upper Field behind the high school, too small, it's also on school property. So Nursery is closed the most of all the fields in town, has zero drainage infrastructure currently, it's a lone rectangle field, just like a turf field. So at the end of the day, all fields in Rye reside in neighborhoods and I'm sorry if those who live near Nursery prefer the quiet and rarely-used grass field, but it's not their property. This is city-owned land, it's for recreational use of all Rye citizens and primarily for our kids. Let's be clear. No plans or, there's no plan or need to change this site at Nursery, other than simply the surface of the playing field. There are no lights, no large stands, no other structures of buildings that don't already exist. We just want to take an existing field that has closed more days of the year than it's open and provide a safe, durable play space for our kids to spend both structured and unstructured time outdoors with their friends. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you all for all of your service. And I am representing the neighborhood. We have not argued neighborhood much whatsoever. We certainly did not want to appear to be not in our backyard people because there were so many other good reasons to not put artificial turf on top of what is Nursery Field. However, I started thinking, we are the neighborhood and we do have something to say here. And interestingly and disappointingly, the neighborhood was never even approached by anyone on council to talk about it. Conversations have been held with the group, apparently several times, many times, there was a very early email that went out that said, there's some talk that we might be putting a field in the neighborhood. We, I'm just trying to paraphrase, it was something like, we might like to hear what you guys have to say. Well, that seemed to be quickly squashed because nobody ever came to see the neighborhood. Now that the trees are, the leaves on the trees are gone, please drive by the neighborhood. You can see my house, it's the blue one, you can see all of the houses, it's right there. If our kids forgot a ball, we could, with a better arm, I could probably throw it to them. It is right in our neighborhood. Our kids have played soccer, our kids have played lacrosse, my husband here tonight has coached these sports. We are, myself not included, very into sports and really appreciate what Rye offers as far as sports. And I'm sorry to say, but I just don't think that there's an injury here. Yes, we are here for 29 years, we have had the inconvenience of driving to SUNY Purchase and all the way to Rye Country Day and all the way to Stepanak. It's not that far, we have car pulled. Surely would we have liked to have more field space right in our own backyard? I mean, maybe, it's super convenient, as Dan said, the kids walk there from our house. And yet, none of the other fields, this was deemed to be the worst field, it isn't a neighborhood, we were not given any time from council or anybody to see how we feel about it and we are a small, modest neighborhood. We're the people who are going to stay, hopefully, we're the people who are not outgrowing our houses because they're not that big. And I do fear that this is going to be a gift that is going to just keep on giving. Some of the people who have not been here, it was a gift for the Rye High School turf field, that was also a gift and that was also a highly contested bond to pay for the upkeep, the maintenance and the replacement. So I'm just hoping that we can have a few more details on who's going to pay for this once we've run through the first 3 million. Thank you.
Susan Morrison.
Good evening, everyone, it seems a little strange to be sitting here as opposed to there, it's been quite a long time. However, I have had very little reason to come and speak until tonight, but I feel this is a very, very important issue. I'm not here to debate whether turf fields are good or bad, I'm not a fan of turf fields for many reasons, but to put this one in a wetlands, and you can debate on whether or not it's in the wetlands or by the wetlands or around the wetlands, it's in the wetlands, it's over a brook. And in one of our most historic areas in our entire city, just doesn't seem right to me. The city of Rye is blessed to have a lot of things that haven't really changed in terms of our history. And I've lived here for 50 years, I've seen a lot of changes, but none that I think would impact the perhaps most historic district of our city as much as this. I'd just like to say, I love athletics, I was an athlete, I did a lot of running around, I happen to live by a school where I grew up and I could go out in the backyard and run around. But, you know, and I think our athletic kids, I love all our athletic kids, I have three grandchildren who are in the programs themselves. But these children, who are the children of the people who want this field so badly right now, will indeed grow up and they'll leave Rye. And they'll maybe come back, but maybe they won't. But the thing I'd like to say is, Rye as we know it, could and should stay unchanged in this particular area. So I please, please, ask you to continue considering the needs, find another place, maybe you can rebuild the field with more grass so that we're not looking at a turf field and the nap house, the oldest house in Westchester County. Thank you very much.
Suki Van Dyk.
Hi, Suki Van Dyk, 62 Garden Drive, also a lifer at this point, I think, 30 years here. I'm asking you to hold off on any plans to change the field at Nursery Field Park from natural grass to synthetic turf until a thorough and unbiased review can be done. I believe the process to date has been deeply flawed and designed to lead to only one predetermined outcome. Refusing calls for a new independent review while dismissing the 2011 independent consultant review, which declared this site to be unsuitable for synthetic turf in favor of one done solely by a design and build company, oh, two companies, who are members of the Synthetic Turf Council, is a stunning example of thumb on the scale process. Time and time again, members of our community asked for an independent and holistic review of this project. Time and time again, members of our community asked that medical and environmental experts be allowed to present information that calls into question the information presented by members of the Synthetic Turf Council. Every request was denied. Rye Rec admitted in this chamber that they were only tasked with solving for field time, not any other factors before making their decision. Recommendation, residents were told their questions would be answered when the project got to planning. Then planning was stripped of its authority and no public comment was allowed at their meetings. Sustainability was shut out. No holistic view of the needs and desires of our community was ever undertaken. I served on Rye's Traffic Committee for many years. We're often asked to weigh in on requests from residents and one of the ways that the Rye City Code minimizes the inevitable friction that happens between residents is to set a buy-in threshold of 75% of the neighbors agreeing that a change would be beneficial. If 75% of the neighbors don't want the change, it doesn't move forward. That's just for a stop sign. So why would this city council be considering a change of this magnitude over the objections of virtually 100% of the neighbors and hundreds of other Rye residents who have written to object to the process used to determine that synthetic turf was the best outcome here? Other than that, for the next few weeks, the lame duck majority can push through their desired outcome without granting the people of Rye the unbiased review we've been asking for. They shouldn't, I hope they won't, I hope they will instead put the clear will of the voters ahead of their personal desires. The voters of Rye resoundingly rejected this type of governance earlier this month. The candidate promising to continue it received under 3% of the vote. The people are telling you, they want a government that comes together to solve problems, not a government that pits neighbor against neighbor. Please listen. Thank you.
Matt Pym.
I did have a speech to read, but I think I'm going to just skip that. Basically, this obviously was supposed to be a public hearing, started off as a 20-minute conversation, questioning a lot of sort of process, I believe, how it started. Josh, that insulted me about not sending him what he asked, I did forward it to you again, that I sent you on June 16th, to the whole city council, that you guys asked what we were committing to. So thank you for embarrassing me and making everybody laugh, where to start this off properly. What questions can I ask that I've heard that people were concerned about? Number one, like I said, you asked me for a letter, something on a napkin, again embarrassing me, I sent it to you, it's in your email, that was on June 16th. Replacement turf was based upon eventually, the first estimate that came in was 1.8 million, was the last project for the last turf. If you call any turf company, look at a field size, you can get ballparks. We put it up to $3 million just to have some wiggle room from 1.8, that also would absorb the 300, so let's say it was 2-2, we had $800,000 in wiggle room. Okay? I don't know why we're saying it's 3 now, unless because we're probably referencing the email I sent on June 16th, that we would pay up to 3, but a turf field should be somewhere in the high 1s, low 2s. Add to 300 grand, we're still well under where we need to be. Whatever money is left over, if Rye Rec, it's not my field, it's the town's field, we're happy to support and help a replacement field, not a problem. That should be around 700, 800 grand in 10 to 12 years. I can't be any more clear about that. Replacement costs, field costs, maintenance costs, last estimate was $15,000 for a grass field that includes all the fertilizer and maintenance for lawnmower, maintenance for a turf field of this size is 7,000. So $8,000 in savings. I believe the city probably would pay that. People keep asking who's going to maintain the field annually, they're going to save $8,000, I'm assuming that would be sort of the same arrangement. If you'd like this group to pay for maintenance as well, you got to ask that on the side. 501(c) I heard kept getting asked, the 501(c) is retroactive to June of this year when we filed it, we're in a sixth month review, which puts our approval on Friday of next week. It's irrelevant, it's retroactive to June, you love making a point of it because it's a cool thing to carry over here, not a big deal for us, we're not worried about it. As far as, you know, what this could look like, I have no idea. We ask other towns, they're like, well usually your city council trusts your donors, your donor trusts your city council, everyone's in the same boat. This is a very unique situation. No one seems to trust what's going up here, you guys don't seem to trust us, but we're there. I mean, you know, we're not going anywhere, the money will be there when you need it. If you decide to vote on it, you tell me, Matt, we're going to vote on it based upon money being the bank on this date, we will have it, just tell us what you want. Any other questions on the financing while I'm up here? Okay.
Claire Colvin and Ellie Pym.
Hi, my name is Ellie Pym.
And mine is Claire Colvin.
I live on 93 Overlook Place.
And I live on 67 Dearborn Ave.
My favorite sport is lacrosse.
And mine is lacrosse and soccer.
I really want this field because usually we have to travel far away for our YL.
I want this field because I have to travel 10 to 40 minutes away for soccer.
We are in 4th grade.
And we understand the data that Nursery Field is a good place for a turf field.
We love playing on turf.
When we play on grass.
It rains and our games get canceled.
But when we play on turf.
We can play in all types of weather.
So please.
So give us a turf field.
Thank you.
Great job, thank you. Chris Cohen.
Good evening, Mayor Cohen, city council members and fellow Rye residents. My name is Chris Cohen, I live at 315 Oakland Beach Avenue. I'm a fourth generation Rye resident, well actually, including my kids, I guess we're a fifth generation Rye family. I was raised to believe in community service and to take the long view on the impact of actions, to consider what is best for the greater good of the entire community and not just to rush to a decision of the moment. to rush to a decision of the moment. In the best interest of our entire community, a master plan for the entire site should be developed prior to rushing to any decision on a piecemeal basis. This is exactly what I did years ago by developing pro bono a master plan for Rye Town Park that included most of what you see there today, including the lake. Not only was it designed to be aesthetically pleasing, expand biodiversity, but to blunt flooding and reduce non-point nitrogen and other pollution to Long Island Sound. I know this property better than most. I worked there when it was J.B. Rich &amp; Sons. That property is overwhelmingly a floodplain and what appeared to be wetlands. It was inhabited by turtles, other reptiles, small mammals, songbirds, and many native plants. The site worked well absorbing surge floodwaters, reducing flooding impact to downstream Rye homes and now very important Rye municipal properties, from the nap house to the birdhouse to the friends' meeting house also, as well as the firehouse. Prior to creation of the field, regrading field, et cetera, I don't recall Milton Road flooding as often as it does. Now is not the time to rush to install an artificial field and a floodplain. The entire property has tremendous value to our larger community, including but not limited to protecting many Rye resident homes downstream from flooding, reducing non-point nitrogen pollution of Blind Brook and Long Island Sound, reducing erosion and sediment infiltration to the brook, which crushes its essential estuary vital spawning habitat functions, silting that makes its way to Rymerina, which we all know is very costly to remove, and limits other Rye residents' recreational opportunities by using their boats, also provide various other environmental important uses and value for entire community benefit. So in the best interest of our entire community, first and prior, a master plan for the entire site should be developed before rushing to any decision on a piecemeal basis. Therefore, I respectfully request that you do not approve artificial turf at the nursery field at this time. Thank you for your time this evening.
Bruce Kegury. Did I say that right?
No, Keery.
Bruce Keery. Sorry.
Briar.
Hello, my name is Briar. I play lacrosse, soccer, and field hockey. Outside of school, I love to play sports with my friends. This fall has been so sad because we barely got to play soccer because of the weather closing Rye fields whenever we had games or practices. Lacrosse has been super frustrating and expensive because we are forced to play with teams far away because they have better access to all-weather fields. And I couldn't go to a tournament in Delaware because it was too far and I feel like I let my team down. In field hockey, I can't even join a team in Rye and I have to travel to Greenwich three times a week. Did you know the Rye Girls' field hockey team never gets a full field to practice on, often only getting 1/4 to 1/2 of the field to practice? In conclusion, the kids of Rye deserve better, so let the kids play. Thank you very much.
Good job. Thank you. Camilla Carey.
Thank you very much, Camilla Keery. Thank you for your service. Not sure if you can tell yet, I'm Australian. So I can't say that I've lived here for X number of years, and I have to say tonight is the first time I've felt unwelcome in Rye. I don't feel like I should have to validate how long I've lived here for my kids to be happy. My husband and I are both Australian. We moved to the city, you know, big American dream, great jobs. We wanted to move somewhere when we had kids, where our kids were going to be happy and smiling. I now take for granted the fact I grew up in Australia. I could play on a field 365 days of the year. The heat index on the field, I don't even know what it is in Australia. We just played. And I wish I could do that for my kids, but we can't because we don't have the field space. It's just unbelievable. Nursery field is right there. And again, I don't care what field it is, but your Rye Rec Commission, and I don't know where you've all been at these meetings, I've been to every one of these meetings, we listen to them go over every single field in Rye and why nursery field makes sense. I don't know where you were, if you couldn't hear it. I really don't.
In this chamber, they said the only question they were allowed to consider was field time.
Suki.
Not correct. From the commission, not correct.
Thank you.
At the end, I'm going to ask the commission to speak. But please, we have a speaker at the podium. That's the only speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, I've been here. I've listened to it. You guys, we've had so much expert analysis. I'm sorry that it doesn't go your way, but we've had so much. We've all heard it. You guys all have the information in front of you now. You've had the unanimous approval of the Rye City Planning Commission. Again, we were here for those meetings. We listened to them for literally hours, go over every single detail. You've also had the unanimous recommendation from the Rye Rec Committee. That's your group. That's who you're meant to be listening to. So please, you've had all of us emailing, nonstop. You've got our kids up here speaking. You just have to make the right decision. And I'm sorry I haven't lived here for X number of years. I really am. But I want to live here for a really long time. So you can call me an in-and-out, just because I have an Australian accent. But I'm going to be here. I'm going to be here with my kids, and I'm going to watch them play outside and be happy. Thank you.
Thank you. There is irrefutable evidence of a correlation between physical activity and mental health. My name is Rami Harwood, dad of two, coached for many years soccer, and also now a recent Rye Youth Council board member. The reason I joined the Rye Youth Council is because I am a concerned parent. Unlike my friend Caitlin, whose kids go out and play, I'll speak on behalf of my kids and I'm confident in other kids. Just like the kids we've heard about today, they go on devices when don't given the opportunity. And devices, I'm not going to get in the soapbox right now, along with eventually turning into social media, is the direct correlation as to why female teenage suicide is up 4x in the last five years. Teenage female drug use, down. Teenage female sex, down. Why? Because they're at home, alone, in their room, socializing. Some may call that an oxymoron. It's a reality. By having the kids, who when I was coaching, I was somehow my fault that the fields were being canceled, but when the kids are not outside playing or given access to playing, they're going to be on their devices. You know it. You do it. I do it. We all do it. It's a reality. And so for the mental health success of our youth, we need to do whatever we can to provide any outlet other than social media. And I couldn't be more proud of the young kids who've come up here, who are the only ones in this crowd who've actually brought up physical health and mental health. It's real. Thank you.
Couple tough acts to follow. I'm Brett Ehrlich, 91 Hillside Road, which happens to be directly across the street from the turf fields at Rye Country Day, which I love. Thank you to all the council members for your service to our community, for giving the public the opportunity to speak, and then also for talking through the process at the start. I think that was very helpful for everyone to understand. I'm here to express my support for the Nursery Field Improvement Project and to urge the council to put politics aside and collectively do what's best for the current and future children in our community. I shared some of my thoughts in an email to the council members last night, but I also want to speak publicly to represent a perspective shared by many in our community. First, I am supportive of the preservation of our environment, flood mitigation, and protecting the history of Rye. I'm also in support of improving a poorly-designed grass field that is closed or unusable for 70% of the year with a state-of-the-art, durable, and safe synthetic field. These are not mutually exclusive tenants, but unfortunately, that's the perception of many people in this room. By having an open mind and listening to the experts, it's possible for our community to achieve all of these things. If at any point over the last five-plus years of discussion on this topic, there was any data that would show that there was a negative impact to our community, the environment, or flooding, I would not be in favor of this project, nor would anyone in this room. We love our community. We don't want to ruin anything. However, numerous experts hired by the city of Rye have determined that there would be no adverse impact to this project. Hundreds of hours have been spent designing, reviewing, and optimizing the space at Nursery Field by consultants, city officials, and city committees to meet the needs of our entire community, not any individual or neighborhood, our entire community. We can't turn the calendar back to 2002 and debate whether 421 Milton Road is the best spot for a city-owned playing field. What's done is done. However, we have a once-in-a-generation opportunity to correct the design, the stormwater management system, and playability issues of Nursery Field at no cost or impact to the taxpayers of Rye. Now's the time to put politics and factions aside and unanimously support this project and move it to the next stage, which would be having the engineers bid it out and then let the donor group show the money, which is there. And thank you for everything.
Hi, I'm Meg Cameron. I live at 5 Martin Butler Court. Thank you to the council. Thank you to the staff. And thank you for all the residents who are here to speak. It's great to see so many residents who are here to stand up for the environment, which is incredibly important. And so many residents here to stand up for our community's kids, who are equally important. And even so many kids who are here to speak, and the kids speakers are doing a fantastic job. I have no personal stake in this issue. On one hand, my grandchildren live in other states, so I have no personal reason to want a turf field. On the other hand, I'm not someone who thinks things have to stay the way they've always been, so I have no reason to oppose a turf field. I didn't intend to speak tonight. I just came to listen. But what I'm hearing again and again is that turf opponents are citing old studies involving older turf materials, old studies, studies that are not relevant to nursery field. Worse, some opponents are being disingenuous. One cited her daughter's athletic achievements but forgot to mention that her daughter went to Rye Country Day School, which has turf fields. In contrast, the people who hope to see a turf field at Nursery Field are citing new, brand-new, relevant studies. And of course, they're also standing up for the community's kids. As we've heard again and again, the need for a turf field is great. The objections to it are spurious or at best outdated. Whether I'm wearing my science person hat or my grandmother hat, I hope the city council will do the right thing by our community's kids and accept the generous offer of a turf field.
Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I think this has been a great dialogue, which is really important because there are a lot of people who are passionate here. And I think the consensus is that no one has said they're opposed to synthetic turf. They're imposed to synthetic turf in the wrong place. The other thing that people have talked about is what is old or what is new. And what is new, since this whole discussion started in 2019, is that there are artificial turf fields at Rye Country Day that are available to the public, and every child, including the children who spoke tonight, they're going to be available to those kids. And those have not been brought into this conversation. And so the question is, what is right in the right place? That's not what we're talking about. And that's what is for this discussion of this council. Why Nursery Field given new information, including the new acquisition of the thruway property by Rye Country Day, which will be available to all of these students? No one has talked about that. Have these groups talked to Rye Country Day? None of that has been presented here. And so, for example, I'd love to see a study that shows the amount of playtime now that you've got the fields at Rye Country Day, and maybe Nursery Field stays grass. You know, all of this information, that again, it's new. We're updating things. It's important for the council to ask these questions, for this group to ask these questions. But there's a consensus that there are all of these unknowns that have not been vetted by the council. I also want to add, also new, a letter from the Rye Historical Society, which should be involved in the secret process and has not been approached to be involved in the secret process. You are creating, the proposal is to create an elevated, this is not just a field. Right now, you've got a grass field, nursery field. We're talking about creating an elevated commercial structure that may be rented out for tournaments to create revenue, not unlike a stadium, in a neighborhood. All right? Neighborhood character matters. I appeared here before this group because of a tennis bubble that was proposed by Apalamas because it did not fit with the neighborhood character of Indian Village. Does an elevated stadium-like structure fit next to the nap house, the oldest historic structure in Westchester County and in a neighborhood? I think those questions are worth consideration by the council. Thank you.
Hi, Allison Rellier, 12 Halsted Place. I just wanted to come up again because there were comments about sort of citing old studies or not being up-to-date and current. And another thing that has changed significantly, even since we started this conversation in 2019, is the knowledge around PFAS. And I do think we have to be really, really thoughtful about the way in which we behave as a community and the precedent that we set for our children, and the decisions that we make that can never be undone. And we have a lot of information on PFAS that we've put on the website. You know, I'm not a, it's not an absolute thing. I understand kids play on turf. Some of those decisions were made, you know, decades ago, 30 years ago, or Ry High School, where it's a replacement of something that's already been done, a stadium that's already been constructed. But we have a decision to make right now with the most current information. And I think we have a responsibility to make a really sound decision that reflects our understanding of current science. And I don't think, unfortunately, that the science that has been presented by, you know, Stantec, David Nardone, now Vision Sports, is reflective of an unbiased look at what science is really saying about PFAS. And we have so many studies. Go on the website, look at them. They're often from nonprofits, from, you know, public health individuals, experts, physicians, scientists, who have no skin in the game. They just want the best thing for the future. And I just, I do believe that we could work together. I always wanted to work together to improve grass fields, to improve recreational space, and to create a better community. and to create a better community, but we have to really be talking about 2023 and what we should be doing and how we should behave, be behaving in an environmentally critical, very densely populated neighborhood where our children do play all the time and where generations of future children will be playing. So I'm not going to go into the PFAS, but I am going to say that the tests that were done are not the right test. They were looking at concentration in water of 30 specific chemicals when there's 4,700 chemicals, there's so many holes in these studies that it's kind of unbelievable, and so I'm just asking that we really take a deep look, and if it's overwhelming to look at all of it, let's bring in more experts, let's talk to experts who really have nothing to do with the synthetic turf industry or this specific project, but who know the science inside and out and can do right by our children, that's all that we're asking. Thank you. I really appreciate everyone's help, and I think we should do great work for our kids, and a master plan would go, you know, really far in that direction as well.
Chris Watson.
Thanks. I'll keep it quick again, but I just wanted to address something about our outside field partners. So for Rye Country Day specifically, and I should say, I'm on the board of both Rye Youth Lacrosse and Rye Soccer, so I see our field constraints firsthand, especially when there's weather problems and we're scrambling. So we've already rented out Rye Country Day, they're our number-one field partner, they're great to us, we've maxed out our allocation and our footprint there. You know, we're really excited about them possibly bringing more turf fields, that's great. It's just not ours, it's not our town's, and when we rely on outside partners, things are out of our control, and sometimes our kids are told at the last minute that the fields we thought we were going to have are no longer available. So as was said earlier, that just happened to Rye Youth Lacrosse unexpectedly for the spring. We lost our entire allocation at SUNY Purchase, which was a great field partner, because they chose another youth sports organization that they wanted to prioritize, and we lost out, and now we're scrambling and we're going to have to play more way games and rely more on grass fields. I would also just add that, you know, many of these outside field partners, including Rye Country Day, the field is fenced in, it's gated and it's locked, it's not accessible to kids to go up there and to ride their bikes and to meet friends like our high school turf is, so that's why we need fields in our town that are usable for our kids, so
What I'd like to do now is, we have representatives of the REC Commission here, we have expert city staff, and we also have some of our experts available by Zoom, and so if people, if we could, I think, first have the REC Commission come up and speak to its consideration of alternatives in Rye or even RCDS, if you considered.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and all fellow citizens for everyone's well-informed points of view on many subjects. I thought, some of these, to the point of what you just mentioned and some other topics, have been addressed by other speakers, we thought it was important as a commission to just-
Could you just introduce yourself?
Oh yes, I apologize, I'm Rick McCabe, member of the REC Commission, 44-year Rye resident, and have played on all these fields as everyone else here has done. What we thought was important is that the commission just sort of reinforced or corrected any inaccuracies in terms of timing, process transparency, things like that. As everyone has sort of said, this has not, this is not a process that's being railroaded in in three or four months, this goes back to, I remember being in this chamber a couple of weeks before lockdown in February of 2019, considering many of these same issues, and the commission has continued to advocate for the replacement of the field. The point has been brought up that grass was never considered or other surfaces were never considered, not only is that inaccurate in terms of the commission, which examined every form of field, the consultants also brought forth all of the different options, whether that was synthetic or partially synthetic, the different fills, all those kinds of things, so this, it's just that it's clear that grass was certainly a consideration. Topic has been brought up about the replacement costs somewhere down the road. In talking to Rye REC Commissioner, Superintendent, excuse me, Aaron Mance, one practical solution for that, long-term, over the course of what the life of the field would be, would be small annual surcharges for youth, the youth organizations to be able to sort of charge back to their members, that there'd be, in addition to any additional fundraising that could be done, there would be, there would be a system that could be in place for that. Going back to sort of the resources that are on the city website and past studies, Woodward and Curran 2011 study's been cited now for years, yes, and the commission has taken that as part of what we've looked at, but I think we can all agree that not only the world itself, but the physical world in our town is incredibly different than it was in 2011. This was pre-Sandy, prelots of different big storms. It's not to say that it's not relevant, but everyone should know that the commission considered every possible location for these fields. As Albin said tonight, Sterling's not, Sterling's not big enough and it's further into the wetlands than Nursery. E3 is not an option. Rye Country Day, the agreement gives us no assurances in terms of access to that field. It has a, I believe, a clause that says 20% of the time available in a 24-hour day would be for municipal use. It doesn't say City of Rye, it would include Portchester, it would include Ry Brook, so that was part of our, part of our consideration. There's a, tournaments has now been brought up as a topic, we've never considered tournaments as part of, as part of this plan. Rye REC would, the professional staff would maintain complete control over the scheduling and timing of this field, and tournaments has never been something that we've considered as a commission, and it's never been talked about as a revenue generator either. The non-engagement with the neighborhood, I think it's important for everyone to know that one of us, or all of us, have been at every, every one of these meetings now for four and a half years. The first agenda item on our monthly meetings is citizens wanting to be heard, and I don't recall any conversations, other than the user group, and I'm not, I'm not picking them out either, but I don't remember anyone coming to ask us questions or talk about it. We've always maintained that we want this to be a transparent process, and that includes the studies and all the things that need to happen for this to hopefully get to approval, but we do remain unanimous in our support of the replacement of the field and using the user group's unique opportunity. There's no funding available from the town for us to be able to do this, so it's a unique opportunity, should be done with all due diligence and all open remarks, which we've heard tonight, the commission has always felt that way, but we remain unanimous in our, in our recommendation for the field.
So you did look at grass and you decided that it was better to request a turf? Is that-
Yes, in terms of, in terms of that location, the durability of the grass, assuming that, so this, again, this goes to the point of, this is all under the, we wouldn't be having this conversation if the user group didn't come forward and say, we'll raise this money. This is not a consideration, this would not be something that, that their funding is not available, it's not something the commission ever considered until this was an opportunity. And when that came up, we said, okay, great, but let's look at all the different options, and the consultants helped us with that, going back again, four and a half years, to say, what would natural grass look like, what are the costs every year, what's the durability? And obviously, as we know, the durability of the field has been the biggest issue that we've been trying to, you know, to change.
And you look at all the other locations the city owns, and the-
Which are very-
These particular field wouldn't fit anywhere, any other place, or you would have to replace baseball fields, which are a different-
Sure.
-configuration, or the Rye REC would be three times the amount of plastic.
Uh huh.
Okay.
And replacing other types of fields and finding a place to put a softball field and a baseball field, there were those considerations as well.
Or disturbing Sterling, which used to be the dump, so that would be way more costly, way more-
And also, the dimensions of Sterling don't afford us the opportunity for the full-size field.
Okay, so in terms of dimensions and playability, this is why you're recommending this field to be turfed?
Yes.
Thank you.
So this, if this field is turfed at Nursery Field, there's supposed to be a chain-link fence around the field?
Which, almost all of our, all of our fields have that in place. Technically, the fields are only available when they're scheduled through Rye Recreation-
So that means this park, what's a green space, won't be a green space anymore, it'll be a closed-off structure that'll be fenced off that the neighborhood can't walk through?
I, we've considered the definition of green space, not technically, but we've talked about it.
You won't have a grass park that people can walk through anymore?
Our feeling is, it's an athletic field, that's meant to be used only when authorized, with a permit or with a scheduled user group.
Right.
It's not meant to be a place for dog walking, it's not meant to be a place for all those things. I don't live far from that field, and I live very close to Disbro, I would love that opportunity to have that, but I think the point is, we're not taking the middle of Rye Town Park and putting a turf field. This is an existing athletic field, the dimensions don't change very much, it's being done in a way with, at least, you know, we believe the engineers are giving us the right information. You can debate, you know, if there's a vested interest or anything like that, we don't believe that there is, but I don't, I don't think the, I don't think the comparison of taking a green space to turn into an athletic field applies here.
Well, it is, it is a park, right? I mean, and there's grass there, right? And people can walk through there, right?
Well, the same as Founder's Field, nobody goes walking on Founder's Field or Ranger Field or any of the other fields that are designated as athletic-
The regulations are such that these are meant to be for organized activities, they're not meant to be-
Josh, please, go.
Yeah, just a question, so, so the vision of the field would be during the six months that it's used for fall and spring sports, it would be blocked off, and there'd be, what about all the free play? We heard a lot of comments about free play and kids just showing up and pick up games, would that be possible, or would they have to be scheduled?
I think we'd have to, I think we'd have to talk to the cities, the professional staff about that to see if there's an opportunity there.
So that'd be worked out, or that'd have to be worked out?
I think we would want it to be, sure.
Okay, and then what about in the summer, in the winter, when there is no scheduled field time? What happens then? Because-
I think that's the reason, that's why, that's why, just like there are at Sterling and Disbro and Feely, that there would be some fencing around it to create the, at least, the notion that this is a, this is a field that's not just meant to be played on, you know, without any kind of authorization.
So right now, just as I live in, not far from the field either, in the summer and in the winter, that field is used like a park by a lot of people. So just so we're very clear, what we're talking about here in terms of this neighborhood is taking away six months of usage by one group to increase the usage by another group, and that may be something we all want to do, but I just want to be very clear that that's, that's what you're talking about when you put a fence around it and say it can only be used for scheduled or permitted activities, and that's something that concerns me.
May I interject and ask a question? I've seen nursery closed and resting in the summer.
I've seen the resting season or the growing season for the grass, you're not supposed to be stepping on the grass. I mean, that's what Ryan told us.
Send me some tickets, because I probably, massive violation of-
Yeah, we are in violation.
My friend over here probably should be arrested for bird watching, and, I mean-
Josh, it is, it is, just say, it is, it is closed during the off-season. I can't tell you that people aren't walking their dogs there or doing whatever they're doing, but it is intended to be closed, and it is posted as closed during the off-seasons.
Okay, well, I think that's something that the neighbors in the neighborhood in quite a large radius aren't aware, because I can just tell you, I can see it from my property, well, when the leaves are down, I can see it from my property, that is a pretty active space in between seasons.
Which doesn't, I'm not being flippant.
May not, no, may not be good for, may not be good for what you're trying to do.
That does nothing for the durability of the grass field.
It may not, and I have a question that's just been bugging me for, for a long time about this, and you might be the one to help me with this, and maybe it's just an old-fashioned perspective, but it does seem to me, and I do agree with all the people complaining that fields closed a lot when it rains, what is puzzling to me is, and again, maybe it's just generational, but when I was a kid, fields weren't closed, we played in the mud, we got covered in mud, we ran around, we played soccer, we played baseball, we played football, we played all sorts of sports, and our fields were anything but perfect, and, you know, many people more talented than me went off and played in college and other places and things like that. I'm concerned about the amount that this field is, is shut, and maybe that's neither here nor there anymore in our, where we are in what we're discussing, but it just feels like it's closed unnecessarily quite a bit, and watching little kids go use it when it's closed, Greg, sorry, you've got a lot of enforcement to do, they seem to manage just fine.
The one thing I would say is, I think, the expansion of the number of youth user groups and children playing organized competitive sports, I agree with you, I've played on all these fields when it was terrible conditions, including the high school field and everything else, but I think that we're talking about a, sort of a, a new, a new era, a new generation of what that competitive environment's supposed to look like, and I think having a field that's consistently available and always, always ready, I think speaks to that.
So, look, I appreciate your analysis, and I don't want you to take my questions as being critical of what the REC department has done here, because you're charged with figuring out the best use of REC space for REC activities. I think one of the problems we have here is outside of REC activities, one of the challenges we have, and I'm not saying this is your, your charge, it's our charge up here, and our charge as a community to figure out, how do we balance the usage of the space, right? Because if we were sitting up here talking about, forget about turf, synthetic turf, if we were talking about building a grass field, maybe the, if the experts had come and said, hey, you know, you could renovate this thing and put a chain-link fence around it with natural grass, it'd be a much better thing, the question I still have is, all right, well, what are we taking away from people who use it the rest of the time? We wouldn't have the argument about PFAs and all of that stuff, but there's still a fundamental change in the neighborhood and the way people are using it, and, and maybe that's just the culture of the neighborhood, maybe that's just the tradition of what's been going on, maybe it's because it wasn't ever used as originally envisioned, but I think that's one of the things that we as a council have to consider, is there is an impact on the neighborhood and the way it's used, and we're talking about its imperfect use for six months a year, and then maybe it's illegal but custom use, the balance of the time.
Definitely illegal to the detriment of regular grass growing, right?
Well, I think, I think that's up to the people who use it, whether they feel it's detrimental or not. I know this gentleman has spotted quite a few birds and-
Clearly, it's bad because they're here looking for a turf field, it's not working for them.
For that, for that user group.
Let's table that.
Anyway, I wasn't trying to take that, I wasn't trying to create that issue for you, I was just trying to separate that issue, which is one issue, from what you're talking about, which, which is a certain very important perspective, I'm appreciating it.
Mr. Mayor-
Doug Carey's been trying to ask a question.
You mentioned, you mentioned the perspective of the commission now as far as how you view, sometimes you call it a field, sometimes you call it a park, but to what Councilman Henderson said, I was serving on the, I was commissioner of the Recreation Department for 15 years and was there during that bond vote, and there's a certain percentage, I cannot remember, about 15% of the park, that was designated as passive recreational, and it starts right on where the property starts at Milton Road, just, just to the north of the entrance, and that corridor there, and then turning towards, going east and then turning back, back to the north, that's not the playing field, and I was always under the, the understanding that when the field is closed for the winter, or to give it time to rest and recover, that all of those areas were still open. And would you, I want to point that out for your understanding, because that was part of what people voted for when we put up the money to purchase the property, but would the fence close that in also?
I'd have to look at the plans. I don't believe so, and I think as a commission, we would want to maintain whatever sort of open accessibility there would be around the field.
Because people still use that portion of the park as for passive recreation.
Having looked at the plans, the fence just goes around the field, it doesn't go around the area that you're talking about, and my understanding is that that area would be rehabilitated as part of the field work, but others can speak to that.
Is that true? I'm just curious, I haven't heard that before.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the planning commission packet. The, Mr. Mayor?
The non, the non-
The wetlands, it's in enhancement.
The non-turf portions-
Mitigation.
Along, along Open Beach and along Milton, would, would, would still remain natural.
I would like to drill down a little bit further, because I know this was a big issue, Mr. McKay, about the tournament piece of it, and without foreclosing any option that makes sense, are we saying that there will absolutely be no tournaments, they're not a part of this, would this have to come back? Because I do think this would have traffic effects, and how would we handle that? And how would we handle that?
So the action that's being considered under Seeker right now is the changing over an existing field from natural grass to artificial turf. That is the action. The usability of that field will essentially, I guess, the frequency of the use might go increase because it won't be closed, but the capacity of the field remains the same. So I don't believe that if there are tournaments or anything of that nature...
But aren't any tournaments planned?
My understanding is that the criterion that we're looking at is that the field will take the schedule as planned for Nursery Field now, ignoring the failures, of course, but is intended to accommodate the existing field schedule, not to increase it nor to add tournaments.
Yeah, but Josh, nothing stays the same. And if all the fields are so bad because they're grass, people are going to use the field more if it's artificial turf. I mean, that's common sense.
We can establish conditions.
You cannot cram any more people because only one team can play there or two teams can play there. You can't have 40 teams playing there because they don't fit.
No, no, I think what Councilman Henderson is referring to is exactly what happened at Rye High School Field and what we were worried about and which we managed for a little while where we limited the number of games because there was concern about the lights. And then over time, as the community predicted correctly, we kept expanding and expanding because there was, it became a great space for the kind of play that's there and night games. And, you know, the neighborhood changed and it is the way it is. And there's, we've more than doubled the number of games from what we first talked about. And that's, maybe that's fine, but I think it's certainly realistic to acknowledge that if we create a very effective, durable play space, it will want to be using it to the max. I mean, why wouldn't we? I think to build it and then artificially restrict it would be an odd, an odd thing that wouldn't hold up. We did that with lights and it didn't last very long.
Well, I was just going to say, the big distinction is the lights, I think, because that expands the day for that, for the high school field. But I think what counsel said is correct, that the capacity of the field doesn't necessarily change. Yes, there might be, if we talk about traffic and things like that, it's a game at a time or it's an event at a time. We're not putting in eight fields where there was one field and have to consider the traffic.
Well, that's always the case.
But these tournaments would be in a new season, in essence. That was just what I heard, that somebody said.
Aaron, are there any tournaments planned for this field?
No, the field is, the field, the field is scheduled from dawn to dusk at this point with the two to three user groups that use it at the current moment. So it's, I don't see it changing very much outside of that.
So there aren't any tournaments planned?
No.
Some people call it Chelsea Pierce is coming to the nursery field.
That would be interesting.
They have.
Right, well, because it's not usable now. We're just wondering what the future plans could be and whether we should in any way suggest that it shouldn't be that? Or should we just leave it open to, like Josh said, the whims of the...
The user groups have to follow specific regulations within their organizations as well, and we are an extension of that. So we're scheduling...
And we decide.
Correct.
Right. The council directs the Rye Commission and the Rye rec staff as to the parameters. So we can constrain it if we choose to going forward.
I, I...
Not suggesting we do so, I'm just saying.
Yes, but the rec already does that when it comes to scheduling all of its fields.
And not the individual user groups. The buck stops here, in essence, but also with you guys.
Or with the fundraising group. This has been, this goes back four years too, that the commission's been adamant from the beginning that control of the field would remain with rec professional staff, that there would be, and I think that's just an important thing for everyone to remember. It's not just the user groups.
That's why I'm drilling down on it.
Ultimately, it's Aaron, who decides when and where people are going to play.
Yes, thank you. I think that needs, there's repeating.
Can I just clarify one thing too? And it's been said before, but you all have never had a conversation with any of the school board for any of the school properties, and there's never been any cross-conversation about, maybe it would be better, we'd be better off putting an artificial turf field on one of the, on the school's property versus rec property. That's never been explored, is that right?
I believe we actually did have an early conversation in 2019. Our experience has been that, and this is with no disrespect to the school district, of which I'm a proud alumni, that the school district takes care of the school district first and that the needs and considerations, which they should, that those needs are...
But there are kids too in the schools, right?
Understood. But we've also talked about schools, open spaces at schools. Midland just did a rehabilitation of their field. You know, Milton certainly could use one, but I think, we're happy to consult with them again on it.
And the schools use the recs fields too.
All the time.
Yeah. So, I mean, there's room to bargain if they were willing to...
If they say so, we're happy to talk.
My understanding, Bill, is there's, on Sundays, you know, the school fields are available to rec. And I think that's correct, right? Sundays, they don't, yeah, the turf, they don't, they don't schedule on those days. So, I mean, it sounds like it's an avenue regardless. I mean, the issue that, we've got a lot of different issues. We've got a neighborhood issue. We've got a playtime issue, trying to solve for as many as we can. So I think that's what you're driving at, is are there opportunities to, are there other ways to increase playtime that rec looked at or could look at? And if you did, great, let us know. And if you didn't, well, that would be a good idea.
You know, I think, Josh, the point is too, is it's not people are against necessarily artificial turf. Maybe some people are, but it's artificial turf at Nursery Field and the location right there. It's not, we're not having a discussion about, should we put an artificial turf field anywhere in Rye? It's about in that one location.
Which, as we've talked about, that was the one location that seemed to make the most sense.
Right, from the recs perspective.
And the consultants' perspectives as well.
Right, from the later consultants.
The later consultants, right.
Yes, yes, yes.
But there are practical issues with the other locations. Some just aren't, they're just completely not available, whether that's Edith Reed or Rye Country Day.
When you talked about baseball fields, you could move a baseball field, right? I mean, you don't have to, as long as there's room for a baseball field, you could move a baseball field maybe to Nursery Field and have a soccer field.
We'd be losing two, if we did, because we've talked about rec field, we've talked about rec park, you'd be losing two of those fields, not to mention the time down during camp season and things like that. And from what we understood and from what I think your team may have measured, there's not enough space at Nursery for those back-to-back fields like you have at rec park.
Not for two, but one maybe, right?
But then we have more user group issues.
No, I get it. There's only a limited amount of space.
Yeah, for sure.
So would your seasons be able to expand?
I don't, I would actually use it, I would do that up to Aaron and the user groups, but I think it's more of a matter of getting all of the scheduled days in when we can as opposed to them expanding. They have their season set, just like Little League or Rye's lacrosse or Rye's soccer.
And maybe this was not something you guys were looking at. So if this is the wrong forum for the question, or the wrong folks for the question, you guys can correct me, but the heat issue that was brought up, so in the summer, this is unusable by Rye Rec, or is it not? Is it, would this make the field usable in the summer by you? Or is the heat an issue? Would it expand your Rye Rec capacity if you had this field?
We haven't really had any requests for use in the summer. I mean, most of the kids, I think, are at camp and doing other things in the summer. So, and it's not the best, it's not the ideal time to rest a field, but that's the only season we have for that field to rest. But it's typically not...
If it were synthetic, if it were synthetic and didn't have to rest with the summer, would it expand your capacity?
We have other experts who can answer that. We have, we're talking about a wood chip and sand infill, I think, which is supposed to be cooler than other infills, but we will switch to people with that expertise.
Leaving aside the heat, just usability, would Rye Rec use the field in the summer if it was not, if it didn't have to rest?
If a group wanted to use it in the summer, we'd have to look at that and take that into consideration with the rest of the schedule. For right now, the only thing nursery is being used for is it's actually our drop-off and pickup location for our Camp 78, which is two buses, which is 100 kids come in and out of there in the morning and in the afternoon when they're back. So it's all based on schedule, what else needs to be used, and if we want to approve what they're asking for in regards to time and space.
But your camp wouldn't expand into using it during the day? Or would it, or could it?
The camp, no. That's a travel camp, so it doesn't, it doesn't apply there.
Yeah, and I would have to say, from my background in environmental work, that I would agree with Mr. Carey here, and based on the fact that we've already had to cancel things in September at the high school, I think, or the middle school, it's going to be hot, even if it's not crumb rubber, for a lot of reasons.
When our upper camp was held at the high school, middle school, we did use it in the morning. Camp did use it.
Right, until it got, yeah.
The camp's not there at the moment. The camp is combined and is at rec park. So, but if, we did use it when we were at the high school.
And there's not really any tree canopy, you know, on the, right.
At the high school, no, but it was, we used it. The kids, kids were able to utilize it.
I think you're going to use it in January. I think with climate change, it's going to swap. I think we're going to be spending more time in the, you know, what's now winter or late winter into spring. You might see an expansion there, but, you know, we'll see.
So I'd like to ask some of our other experts. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
About the field heat question that was asked about traffic and question of traffic study or not. And someone has painted a picture of a, quote, elevated stadium structure. That's not my picture of what we're talking about, but I'd appreciate it if that could be addressed. And PFA, PFAs and other carcinogens or adverse, health adverse elements. And how can we access our experts?
They are joining us virtually. I believe they will be turned on momentarily.
There we are.
Okay.
So I see two gentlemen, if they could identify themselves, I have three gentlemen and a lady. If two, if all could identify themselves.
I'll go ahead and start. I'm Kevin Williams, I'm principal planner for GZA Geo-Environmental, prepared the environmental assessment form, coastal consistency assessment.
Thank you, welcome.
And I'm Adrian Dunk from GZA. I'm a project manager and wetland scientist. I performed the wetland delineation in 2019 and in 2023 at Nursery Field and contributed to the preparation of the EAF.
Could you state your name again? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Yes, Adrian Dunk.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm David Nardone from Vision Sports Design.
So we...
And then you have Peter.
Oh, yes, Peter.
Peter Domostiskey with Rambo. I prepared stormwater assessment and design portion of stormwater for the field.
Okay, so Heat Island, question about how hot this field is likely to be. I think we're looking at a wood chip or maybe wood chip and sand infill. Whichever expert feels he or she has the best perspective?
Yes, Mayor, that's the, you know, part of the system, the infill we've been talking about is, you know, wood chip product with, you know, almost all the infill systems have some kind of sand component to them. The sand you would, would really be placed below the wood chips. The wood chip would be on the surface and in the fibers. And yes, I showed some slides, you know, a few presentations ago. I don't have them ready right now, but that showed, you know, the surface is cooler than, you know, the conventional systems.
Mayor, if I may add to that, there's a unique aspect to the site location where it's downhill, and there's a significant tree canopy. So you had about 30 feet high hill there. And if you look at aerial photography, actually at 9:00 AM in the morning, approximately 40% of the field during August is shadowed. And it would be interesting, you know, potentially to look at the midday or the 1:00 during August where the shadow length is the longest, you would probably see a significant amount of shading over a good portion of the site. So that's just another, it's just a sighting characteristic, given the location in this valley area.
I have a question. What is the actual, do we have any data on how much hotter this surface will be for the players compared to a grass field? Not versus crumb rubber, but this specific product.
Yes, we can send you some data that's been gathered from, you know, various locations at different temperatures.
That would be really useful, thank you.
Is there any fire hazard with the wood chips? I mean, do any of these fields ever burn up?
No, they, most of the, I think all the products we've talked about, they pass what's called the pill test, which, you know, you need to pass to be used indoors. So the turf itself will, you know, you can light it on fire, but it will not continue to burn. It will extinguish it. And that's why you see synthetic turf in, you know, indoor facilities.
So there was a question asked about traffic and need for a traffic study. That may be an in-house question or it may be for GZA. I'm not sure which.
I can discuss it in reference to the environmental assessment analysis under State Environmental Quality Review. So the standard in reviewing traffic generation is you compare the no action versus the with action. And here, you know, I think, given the testimony that, you know, tournaments are not planned and that sort of thing, the field has the capacity to hold one sporting event at a time or practice. I've seen it in occupation with parking, with a full event going on, and I understand the concerns of the public. Now, in terms of how traffic is analyzed, this notion that perhaps on any given week where the utilization might increase by 50%, you know, where one day there was an event planned, you don't have any traffic at all, and then, you know, if a synthetic turf is put in place and allows for improved play and that practice isn't canceled, the traffic volumes are analyzed based on peak arrivals and departures, not the sort of numerical all-day traffic that might be generated for multiple sporting events. And one of the things to consider here is when you analyze traffic impact, you analyze the network's ability to handle the traffic. And to do that, you analyze what's called level of service. And that is a temporal analysis. How many cars go through an intersection during a specific period of time? Now, there's no way to quantitatively characterize the level of service degradation from events that were canceled versus that weren't canceled. The presumption is that the field in current full utilization during peak arrival and departure periods would mirror the same circumstance with the synthetic field and that the State Environmental Quality Review guidance on this is very specific. Is there an increase in traffic substantial enough to alter the level of service on roads to be affected by the proposed project? Will the additional traffic volume result in a change to the level of service? And the answer to this is no, based on the way the traffic is analyzed. Now, if it's to the deference of the city council, the planning commission, to provide a planning, to provide a traffic impact study based on the existing conditions and determine whether or not signal timings or other possible enhancements like turning lanes or whether scheduling breaks between different events is warranted to minimize impact on the traffic circulation network, you know, that's up to the discretion of... traffic circulation network, you know, that, that's up to the discretion of, of the commission and, and, you know, the planning department. But in terms of, and as, as, you know, State Environmental Quality Review analysis and the forms that are provided are sort of very prescriptive on this, and traffic impact studies are by their nature, you know, not about the incremental volumes throughout a day that might have been displaced by a weather event. It's, it's strictly about peak hour traffic and whether the network is able to handle the volumes of traffic from an event or a land use.
There has been a description of the field as an quote elevated stadium structure. My impression is that one end would be raised a few feet, that there would be a curbing around the, at least partially around the field, but the field would, the field would be lowered at its south end, raised a little at its north end to provide the level surface that it does not have now. And there would be essentially concrete curbing or a low wall, but it would be a flush field, and there are no elevated structures. Is my impression correct?
It is indeed correct. It's a three-feet increase, exactly as you described. There's no additional seating. There is no stadium seating. There are no additional benches proposed, and from a visual perspective, would be imperceptible at a distance.
And I assume-
Wait, wait, David is-
David, go ahead.
Yeah, just, just to add to that, you know, some of the curbing is, is added to, you know, to achieve the, the playing surface, the proper grading, and to also, you know, save, you know, decrease any impact to some of the trees. You know, we could grade it out with, with no curbing for, you know, three sides of the field, but it would have other impacts. So it's just, it's kind of a, it's a, it's kind of a nice thing that you can do when you're kind of installing a curb, you know, decrease the amount of, of impact, keeping the, keeping the grading to a, to a minimum, basically.
Is, is-
There is a, a low wall on the north end of the field, which is, again, to limit the impact, you know, not to grade into the wetlands buffer at all, you know, basically keep the footprint of the field, you know, almost the same footprint you have today.
And David, to that, to that point, you know, that's really not visually accessible, either from upland viewpoints or from the entry to the site. It's only visible from basically the, the tree line at the, at the northern extent of the property, which-
Right, you can walk, you'd be able to walk, you know, from the parking area, you know, up onto the field without, you know, with just a gentle slope.
There's a chain link fence around the whole field, though.
There is a chain link fence today on the, on the east side of the field. We have a chain, we are showing a chain link fence currently on all sides that could be removed. The idea on, you know, the, the, on, you know, different, 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 different sides, basically, have different, different purposes. Like there's a, there's a fence on the east side today, we put a, we replace, essentially replace that fence. The fence on the, on the west side, where we would have some players' benches, team areas, you know, the idea is to keep the younger kids on the field, you know, and they're sitting on the bench and not, you know, not, not paying attention to the game. So things like, things like that.
And to, to add on to that, there's a concern about being able to use the passive space. That would also be accessible. Access from Elmwood down through the site that was mentioned is sort of a, a local, you know, benefit, so, you know.
Yeah, there, yeah, there's no, there's no, I don't, I don't, I don't believe we showed, you know, gates to lock, but, you know, we would encourage the commission to allow access to the field when it's, when it's not programmed, especially somebody mentioned climate change and, you know, you're, you're gonna, you know, kids are gonna be outside. One of the benefits of the climate change is you're gonna be outside more in the wintertime, and you are gonna want to get on these fields and, you know, off the devices and so on. That's, that's so critical.
Is landscaping part of the plan? Landscaping of the, for instance, of, of, of the curb or the wall to the extent it's visible?
Yeah, there's, there's some, there's some, some grading and some, you know, reseating that will happen with that. And then there's the whole mitigation, you know, package that, you know, is kind of a landscaping for that passive recreational area, which Adrian can speak to.
Have we ever seen a 3D rendering of this field? I don't think we've ever seen a rendering yet, have we?
Like a model?
No.
No, we're just studying the environmental and flood-
But we never, we haven't, we haven't seen a picture of it, right?
It's only been to 60%. That's all we funded for.
David, was there something you were gonna say?
Um, no, we could, I mean, that's something that could be provided at this point now that we're through, you know, through the, we have the proposed grading.
But Adrian, can you talk about the, is it 20 new trees being planted in the mitigation area?
Yes, because the existing field is in the buffer zone to the wetland, and the proposed field is in a very similar footprint. It is inherently in the buffer zone to the wetland. And so to compensate for that alteration to the buffer zone, we have proposed an enhancement area as mitigation. So that enhancement area is adjacent to the wetland and kind of kitty-cornered to the field. In that area, currently, there's a high density of invasive species, both invasive herbaceous species like mugwort, but also vine species, which are damaging the trees that are there today. So we are proposing a regime to periodically mow the area and cut and remove the vines from the existing trees so that they can continue to be healthy, and then to also plant 20 native trees in that area. So that will enhance the nativeness and diversity of the vegetation for the wetland, enhance shading to the wetland, and will also act as a visual buffer from some of the neighboring properties into the site.
There have been questions about PFAs in particular, but I do recall that in earlier discussions, we had talked about purchasing only field elements that have been Prop 65, California Prop 65 tested and cleared, is not requiring that California warning label. And so question for, and, and I believe, I believe under Prop 65, California requires testing for PFAs. But I'm not sure who the expert is who's best able to speak to this. Can, can we get those Prop 65 cleared materials for our field? And, okay, go, go ahead, David, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So yes, the, you know, system that we're talking about would not have any reported, reporting required under Prop 65.
And-
And we, we would be testing this material before it's shipped? Or how do we determine?
We, we can do that. You know, the, a lot of projects sometimes will put, you know, required Prop 65 testing, you know, in the specification, requiring that of the manufacturer. That's something that we can do. I don't, you know, it's, it's an added, it's an added cost. Not everybody does it. I know, you know, I know that they, you know, deliver and install fields in California with, without having to report anything. So, you know, if we thought our manufacturing was going to be different for some reason, we could test for it.
And in terms of PFAs in, in particular, we can test for that?
We can, we can test for that. You know, the, the, this is, you know, kind of a wild goose chase in terms of, you know, the PFOS. There, there was a polymer, a coal polymer that was used in fiber that was considered in the PFOS family. So that's really what you should be testing for. Are they continuing to use that? You know, it's, it's considered non-toxic. If you wanna, if you go into a hospital and you, you know, get an IV and, or you're, you know, that, that plastic is the same coal polymer that was used in turf, now the manufacturers have been forced to remove that. So that would be the only kind of PFOS that you might find in turf, you know, if you boil it down to the ingredients, we can test for that. People have, you know, been doing that. PFOS testing is, you know, extremely difficult because it's, you know, there's, it's, it's, you know, everywhere, ubiquitous in our environments.
And, and how do you recycle, reuse the carpet?
Sure. So, right now, the best option is to process the, the carpet. And the reason we use the word process is we remove the infill. You know, usually it can be done on-site, but more often today, you know, this is sort of evolving. There are manufacturers or, or, or companies that are, you know, working on more recycling facilities. But right now, I would say from, from awry, if we were moving the field, say, at the high school, we'd send it to Pennsylvania. It would be processed. They'd remove the rubber. They'd remove the sand. They would send the carpet for recycling, and there are a few options for that. You know, I did a few fields this summer with Shaw Sports Turf, so they were processed in Pennsylvania and sent to Shaw and, and, you know, fully recycled. And you can buy a carpet, you can buy a system that is cradle to cradle now, you know, that's very limited to Shaw Sports Turf, but you can recycle anybody's carpet today.
This field, if it was built, would be in a, in a floodplain. Say you had a flood and you had over two feet of water and sat on the field for a couple days, would you have to replace the whole field? Or would it, how would you, how would you, you know, resuscitate the field?
Yeah, it depends on the type of flooding.
It'd be saltwater. It would be saltwater.
Yeah, yeah, so, saltwater's not, not the issue, you know, if it, if it's some silt on the surface, which I've seen, I've seen fields cleaned, you know, because there's a lot of silt material. I've seen fields moved because there's a flood, you know, flowing, flowing water, you know, more of a floodway situation. So, you know, we're, we're proposing, that's the reason we're proposing to raise the field a little bit. We are at the very edge of the floodplain, so I would expect, you know, some silt and some debris and stuff on the surface. I wouldn't, you know, I would expect a surface that could be, that could be cleaned.
Actually, can I drill down on that? Why are you saying that the field is only partially in a flood zone?
Because Peter can speak to this better than I.
Yeah, Peter.
I believe the floodplain, I believe the floodline, 100-year floodline runs through the field.
The 100, well, I'm looking at this draft, page 11 of 13 of this ginormous document. It says it's, thank you, it's in both the 100 and 500-year floodplain. And the county's document says, and I thought our map that's here, the FERMET, suggests that the entire area is in Zone AE, which is a special hazard zone. So I'm not sure why we're saying that.
I think Peter's gonna show us a map and explain.
Yes, that's, that's the FERMET map I'm talking about.
Yeah, so the, the map I'm showing right now is the existing FEMA floodplain elevation, which is defined by FEMA to be at 13 feet above.
So when we elevate it, we'll elevate it on one end 13 feet above the flood, the, both 100 and 500-year floodplains? Is that what you're saying?
No, sorry.
Okay, I just want to make-
But not on the other-
No, 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 no. No, 13 feet is the height above sea level. It's going to be six inches above the 100-year.
It's above the base flood elevation, which is, Mayor, I believe you've correctly stated that. So 13 feet is the base flood elevation.
Right. So, but the entire parcel is in Zone AE, right?
It is, yes.
Okay, that, I just want to be sure that we're understanding. It's, it's still a floodplain regardless.
Yeah, and, and, and Peter, I mean, maybe it's helpful to, to summarize your, your discussions, that you did model that flood event. And in light of what David was saying about, you know, and the concern regarding whether that would displace the field, you know, that I believe the idea is whether 100-year, 500-year flood, or, or any storm event that, that is, you know, calculable, you know, there would never be two feet of water standing on the field, you know. So that the, the idea is that the infiltration and the underdrain system here are much more effective than the existing soil composition. So Peter, I don't know if you can, you know, address, I think that was the underlying question from the commission.
Yeah, sure. So, a couple things to mention here in this map, you know, there's a number of colors, so I'll just quickly refresh just the understanding of the colors here. The outer orange area is the 500-year flood, and the, the blue area is the 100-year flood limits. Now, the red, the red stripe area is what's called the floodway. So FEMA defines certain corridor where they expect the water to actively move during the flood, whereas the, the floodplain itself tends to be, where the water tends to go, that doesn't necessarily move. So when you think of, you know, it's certainly possible that some debris can float through, but there wouldn't be necessarily a friction, you know, so to speak, the rapidly moving water in the area of the, of the proposed parcel here because it's on the fringes of the floodplain. Additional item to note here is that we know that just north of the field is back on, so that the fact that it's slightly elevated, it kind of creates a barrier. So this is really kind of a nook where the water tends to find its way, but it's not flowing, it's not moving. We, we, we did evaluate the effect of the proposed, proposed changes to the field, which include, as, as we mentioned, leveling the field to approximately 13.5 inches at the center, about 13, I'm sorry, 13 and a half feet and 13 on the edges, to, to maximize the time where, when, during flood events, the field itself would be above. And, and, you know, projects are proposed within floodplains all the time, and this is what we do, we evaluate it. So there's a state and federally prescribed methodology to evaluate the effect, and we presented to this group and, and other groups, the outcomes of the analysis showing no effect on flooding. So that's kind of a repeat.
Peter, and can you speak to the water quality when it drains on the, on the, on the proposed surface?
So, water quality becomes an issue really when we consider runoff, not during a flooding event, the flooding that we know that, you know, floodwaters can carry all kinds of, of things that tend to settle. But water quality is considered when, when we think of the quality of linebrook and surface waters being impacted by, by, by any given project. And in this situation, during construction, we'll be disturbing this area, and sediment generally, or, or, you know, you think of soil that can be mobilized when disturbed and make its way towards linebrook, which we often refer to as, you know, total suspended solids or total dissolved solids, is considered a water quality concern. So during construction, of course, we would have to implement a specific erosion and sediment control measures, which are typical for, for a project, for any construction project, which include some kind of barriers preventing things during construction. So that's a standard. Now, once things stabilize, once the seed area, you know, developed grass, once the field is installed, there isn't really much of a concern from the water quality perspective. And this is where, you know, what Dave comes in, when he says that the materials used- used, uh, in construction of the field, when they interact with storm or runoff, do not generate any carcinogens or any metals or anything that would be water concern, that there, there, that really where the water quality analysis stops. If that makes sense.
Can I ask one question? It's my understanding that these FEMA maps are the 2007 maps, is that right?
Uh, yes, so.
And then there's, uh, there's a more current map, um, 2014, that, um, could be used as opposed to this older map, is that right?
That's right.
And could you tell me why we're using the older map and not the more current map?
It hasn't been adopted.
Yeah, this is, this is the effective map. Uh, so from the regulatory perspective, we are to.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding what you're saying.
So FEMA releases maps, you know, for communities when they are completed. Uh, and a map becomes effective as released by FEMA for use by the community. And this is what we're looking at. In the meantime, they may advance a new product, a revised map. Uh, and they did that, but that hasn't been, it hasn't become, uh, an effective map for the community, which from the regulatory perspective, we are obligated to use what's effective. Now, we know and looked at the, at the, at the, at the most recent FEMA map, and that reduces, uh, the, uh, level of 100-year flood by close to the foot for, for that area. So the, the impact of the field will be further reduced, reduced if we use the assumption that, that, uh, most recent FEMA map, although not effective map.
Peter, what is the flood, what is the flood, 100-year flood elevation at the field?
For effective map, it's 13 feet.
13, and, and.
For the most recent map.
Wait, Christian.
Yeah, and, Jen, just to be clear, like, this is a map, and then when we apply that to the site, the, the 13 contour, the existing 13 contour runs through the middle of the field. So not, the entire field is not in the 100-year flood as it's shown on this map, just to be clear. And so when, when the question was asked about, you know, possible flooding, I, I answered that question, you know, in general, and in general, and, and our, in our proposed situation, we should stay out of a 100-year flood and we may, you know, we may see a 500-year flood.
So the other consideration is that the preliminary maps for this property at this field location is elevation 12. It's actually being lowered.
Lowered, I just pulled it up, that's correct.
So you're saying that the newer maps would show less flooding than, than the 2007?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay, all right.
So to be conservative in the analysis, we use the current maps because you would have to.
They're more conservative than the newer maps, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, okay, good.
Right, and I'm going to say something that is going to, to some folks probably sound not like me, but having studied this closely and having attended the planning commission meetings, I am convinced that this, as they are proposing, as they are testing, I believe, that this will not negatively impact, um, in terms of flooding. And, and I have to say also, God forbid that we have two feet of water because it, it's not the flood risk that I'm worried about per se. I think if we get to that point, we're in a lot of trouble for, for other reasons. But I am concerned about the rain rate too, and I think that this field, the way it's designed, and having, again, as many folks know now, seeing what stormwater retention improvements can do after construction, I think that the field probably will drain better and it will drain slower. And it can, we can control what goes into the, to the wetlands. But as to the rain rate piece of it, I will, I will point out at the planning commission meeting, we talked about two-year rain rates, um, 10-year flood rain rates, uh, you're going to have to, um, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but, uh, so we, you were looking at three and a half inches in a 24-hour period as the two-year rate, five inches in 24 hours for the 10-year rate. And I will point out again, thanks to climate change, um, for example, Ida was that, that larger number, and our storm on September 29th was 3.5 inches in 24 hours. So these are not rare events. These, these are our new normal. So can you speak a little bit to, um, will your models sustain under that kind of rain rate onslaught and what, what can we expect?
Yeah, so, uh, in general, uh, what we look at is the interplay between when we, you know, what level of events we anticipate, uh, the, the blind brook to kind of start flooding the field versus what happens up to that point, which is, let's say we have a significant rainfall event, and what currently happens is, uh, the field will, uh, direct the water towards the wetland area, and the wetland has certain capacity, will start filling up, and that will overflow towards, towards blind brook. Uh, now, the field itself is a soccer field, uh, or athletic field, and we, we are currently including addition of a, of a, an underdrain system that will help us absorb and direct the water towards the wetland without having it, uh, having it occupy the field itself. The efficiency of that system to move water is a design parameter. And so it's up to us to decide to what extent we want to install infrastructure that can efficiently move the water from the field, uh, because it's a cost. If we don't do it at all, you know, we kind of are back to the situation that we are right now. If we start adding, you know, thicker layer of, of the absorbing media plus additional pipes, we can, we can increase the efficiency. And so currently, the design assumes a 10-year storm under what defines as a 10-year storm today. Uh, and that's a storm to, up to which point we don't expect the blind brook to kind of flood the area or have impact on the area. And up to that point, the system of moving water away from the field is, that's how it's being designed. Uh, we think it's a good practice. For example, a lot of highway systems in the US use a 10-year storm to, to, to size their flood containment capacity. Uh, we can always go above or we can go lower. Uh, if in the future, uh, and that's also important because of the aspect that at some point, when floodwaters do enter the area, not the field itself necessarily, but the area, you know, things, uh, things start to have some different dynamics. So we believe that a 10-year storm currently selected is a, is a, is a reasonable assumption for the capacity of the system to not continuously have the water pounding on the field, but move it efficiently towards the wetland. That's how we went about it. But again, uh, if there's, if there's a need to revisit that, we will certainly openly discuss.
And if it, the storm exceeds that parameter, you're saying it goes into the wetland, the adjacent wetlands that are near Playland Parkway, is that correct? Not towards the houses, for example, or nap house?
So, so unfortunately, some of the houses nearby, and I can bring up on screen again if that helps. So, so, uh, let me switch to the analysis, kind of discuss it, just, just what is being asked. Uh, let me move that out. So on the, on the left-hand side, uh, and we have the existing conditions here, and on the right-hand side, we use the existing conditions. This is approximately, uh, the point in, in this analysis that may be worth discussing. Uh, you can see the houses along Milton Road and, and their situation when, when the flood, blind brook is flooding. So let's say this is something of the order of a 10-year storm event. Uh, the impact of the field is not really there. The water drained from the field just as it did today, and we are outside of the limits of the project itself. There's no impact from the field itself because, as we were saying, you know, the water from the field went where it goes today. The houses are flooded, just as they are under existing conditions. What we're proposing to do here doesn't really have an impact on the houses themselves. They are to a varying extent in the floodplain and, and, and the flooding extends, and the, the, the impact of the flooding has already happened, so to speak. As we move further out into the flooding situation, as we continue to see more of the floodplain, which is those additional panels here, uh, we can see that there are some marginal effects around the field. So maybe when the water under existing conditions covers approximately half the field, it would, it would, it would fill in, it was like a different parameter. But then we looked again at the houses themselves, and that doesn't really change anything really part of houses because how marginal or how, how on the fringes that, uh, the field itself is, uh, that's kind of the, the outcome of the analysis, that the, the field itself does not affect.
Right, I was very struck by these illustrations. And so I just, I think, I just want to repeat, you are saying, because people are very worried about this, as you can imagine, that, that flooding you're talking about, none of that in the worst-case scenario is being, um, made any worse by the, the field itself? That, that's what you're saying, right? That it was going to flood anyway?
Can I ask you a question, please?
Yep, yes.
I live on the other side of Playland Parkway, on Beachwood Lane.
Oh, yes, yes, hi, yes.
Basin to the wetlands.
Yes, the Red Maple, Red Maple Swamp.
Yeah, and I will tell you, you know, over the last 10 years, as everybody knows, it's gotten worse and worse. I've never had a flood in my life. Back in September, I had a full water down my basement pouring my faucets. If he's pouring your water into that basin, it's just going to head towards my house and all the houses on that side. So is he just moving the problem from one place to another?
That's a, that's a.
No, not at all.
Yeah.
Not, not if he also tests.
I don't know if the consultants can hear.
No, he's saying, he's saying.
They can't hear your question.
I, I think he's saying that he can control the water up to a 10-year storm, but over a 10-year storm, the water will behave as it does now.
Now, right.
It doesn't impact, it doesn't change.
I, I lived in that area for 30 years. The wetlands were dry for a very long time. I'm sorry, wetlands, what are you talking about? They put nurse the field in, you pressed all of that water that's sitting on a brook down, and it all came across Playland Parkway underneath, and all of a sudden, those wetlands are wet. If you walk by them, there's a lot of trees down because they can't absorb that much water. And there's all these reeds growing there now because it's so wet all the time, they grow. There's a brook there now that comes out. Where is there a brook there? The water underneath spilling down all the, because that is a, that's the sound, that's the tide rolling. How is there a brook? It's the water that's being pressed down from under there coming up and then flowing down, and it makes up a brook. And right by where that brook is, Westchester County just had to replace that nice path that they did because that area, the pipe under there broke and it collapsed. There's just so much water, extra water, but all of this water being pressed in.
I, I would just want assurances that from them, in light, that that flooding is not going to head towards our houses on that side. Then you can just add another two or three million dollars to the pot to fix all our houses.
That's, that is, that's what I'm asking. I'm looking for them to confirm that, yeah.
That's the only reason I'm here. I don't care about a field, you know, whether or not kids have a field, I really don't care.
Yep.
But I will tell you, if you care about my house, if you care about flood, I haven't seen it like this, you know, I think we all have, right? Let's face it, every 15 years, it's gotten progressively worse. The 10-year storms, they have a three-year storm.
Right.
So even though you're putting in a 10-year storm, you have to equate that we're not in that time range. Every three years, we're getting flooded. And every three years, it's not, fortunately, my house hasn't been that bad, but the people around me, you know, you can tell that on the other side, or on the other side of that land, those houses, they're all the same.
I, I think it's important for people to know that Red Maple Swamp first receives the runoff from Midland Avenue, the Midland Avenue drainage system. That is, everything from Kelly's to Playland Parkway drains through the storm drains into Red Maple Swamp, and then moves from Red Maple Swamp through a culvert to the wetland that is immediately adjacent to the field, and then passes through the brook to Blind Brook. So we're not just concerned with flooding from the field, we're concerned in that passageway with major street flooding.
Ryan, I, I just have a question for Ryan. Is Red Maple Swamp connected to the, to the wetland there, um, adjacent to the field?
Can I just ask?
Or does that drain a little further down?
We just need anyone that's speaking come up to the podium. Nicole can't, and the consultants can't hear.
Could we, could, yeah, to that point, if, if the two people who spoke could just give their names so that clerk could get your names in the, in the record, just so we can try to keep minutes and.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, so Peter can answer these questions also, but the Red Maple Swamp is hydraulically disconnected from the wetlands on the Nursery Field property. So the, the, the Red Maple Swamp drains through those culverts under Playland Parkway, um, through the Nursery Field property, but there is not, um, there's not necessarily a break in the pipe structure. There's a manhole just on the south side of Playland Parkway, um, that water may get in and out of at a slow rate, but it's not, it's not that the Red Maple Swamp discharges to the Nursery property wetland, and then there's a separate pipe system.
It goes, it's piped.
It's piped, the Red Maple Swamp is the pipe that's piped through Nursery Field to Milton Road, um, and the, the Nursery Field, Nursery property wetland is, is not connected to that pipe. It's an isolated wetland system.
Nor, nor to anything else, right? Isn't that what, also why we're here? Because it's isolated, it's small, right? It's not under the jurisdiction of the Army Corps of Engineers or the state, it's our problem.
Thank you. So it's a, it's a separate issue for them, we should, you know, we should look at separate.
Yeah, that Red Maple Swamp, I don't know that I disagree with the frequency of the flooding. In, in Ida, topographically, Playland Parkway cuts off from Nursery Field, the Red Maple Swamp. So in Ida, the water in Red Maple Swamp actually built up so much that it, it drained through the intersection of Milton Road and Playland Parkway. So Red Maple Swamp built up, didn't go over Playland Parkway into Nursery Field, it actually went across to Ellsworth Street and down Ellsworth Street. It, it was flowing, like I have videos of it. So that system isn't, isn't really what we're talking about at Nursery.
Thank you, Chris, thank you, Ryan.
And just Ryan and Ida, since you brought it up, Nursery Field was unaffected by rising water.
Yeah, I think the water got to about the north end of the field, not on the field, which is about elevation 10, and that correlates to where the water was on Milton Road in front of the nap house, where we closed up by Rybeach Avenue. Um, so that, that was Ida, and coincidentally, Sandy, which was a different storm event, right? That was a coastal hurricane, was about the same elevation. The, the water got to about the same spot.
From storm surge?
From, from rain and storm surge, right? So that was more tidally impacted.
Yeah.
Um, and Ida was, was more riverine, and just coincidentally, they got to about that same 10 elevation. And what, what Peter's showing here, if, if you didn't hear him or see him, is at elevation eight, through his analysis here, at elevation eight is when the brook flooding takes over onto the Nursery Field property. So anything above eight is that tidally affected brook flooding and not the Nursery wetland property. So the catch basins at, on Milton Road in front of Nursery Field are at elevation six and a half. That first house's driveway is at like seven. So you're flooding Milton Road in a crazy moon tide with no rain, you'll, you'll see water get up to seven, seven and a half. But in, in a storm event, even this one we had in September, that house flooded, that driveway was flooded, um, Milton Road was closed, um, but the field wasn't flooded.
Right.
So you, you have to get, you know, Ida plus a few feet. a few feet.
When you say not flooded, do you mean, I mean, I was, at least after Ida, I mean, I was up to my ankles in water in that field, so I'm not sure what, is it at a particular time, or is it, I mean, I just experienced flooding there during Ida?
I mean, the wetland flooded in Ida, but I didn't, I visited it, I, and we didn't have any debris clamber or anything on the field, per se. And the, the elevation of the water in the, the road, like I said, was about to, that triangle, you know, is about elevation 10. And that wasn't, you know, that's not drainage area Nursery wetland affected. That was the, that was the brook, right?
Okay. I, I mean, I just, whatever caused it, I was standing ankle-deep in water in, in the field, but it may not, it may have been something, it may have been something else. I just, I was just trying to clarify what it is. We're talking about water source here, as opposed to...
Yeah, I mean, the field doesn't drain.
Right.
You could slosh around in water. I've ruined some pairs of shoes on that field, yeah. But that wasn't, that, that I...
It didn't come from the brook. It came from the sky.
I, I believe that's the case, yeah. It might stand there.
I have a question. It's not controversial, but you never have the opportunity.
Can you stand up over here? Because they can't hear you otherwise.
I just had a question about the remediation for the trees, just because it's our first opportunity. Can you put the map back up and show us where the trees are going to go? Thank you.
One second.
Thank you.
Yes. So here is the site. This is the field. This red area shows where work is proposed in the buffer zone to the wetland. This blue line is the wetland. And so we are proposing the enhancement area up here in the west side of the park. So it's, it's right up, pretty, pretty close adjacent to the wetland boundary with 20 trees planted. The trees will be planted to be, you know, not on top of that existing pipe, obviously, as we don't want to have adverse, you know, root pipe interactions.
Thank you. Was there consideration for the east and south side? You said before it was to help neighbors, you know, from having more trees from the field, but the majority of the neighbors don't live that's closer to the road. And years ago, Mayor, it was talked about doing some planting if this happened?
I think you're right.
And so there's a lot of homes on the east side, and Sandy knocked down a lot of those trees on the east and south side, where we're abutting the field. If this were to happen, any improvement were to happen, it would be amazing to think that we could plant trees in that area, regardless of whatever decision is made from this council, because it, it is directly against the field now, and a lot of those trees came down in Sandy. So I know you're putting them up in that corner right now. If this were to happen, I would love that to be reconsidered, or at least added to, not reconsidered, but added to.
I, I think, go ahead. I'm sorry, Adrian.
Oh, I was just going to say, so, you know, visual screening for the neighbors is a kind of a benefit of this planting plan, but this planting plan is driven by the wetland ordinance.
Which I love. And I don't want to change that. I just meant, the language used before was that benefit. And so it was spoken about years ago. So if this were to move forward, it's something that I think would be, this council should definitely put some thought into. And would be great to hear.
Thank you. I think, David, you mentioned that there was, that the, the purpose of the curbing on the east side was to avoid having to do a sloped border that might damage trees. But I, my question is, is there also space there to plant additional trees?
Yeah. Yeah, there, I mean, I'm sure we could find some space to plant some additional trees. But yeah, the intention there was to, you know, save everything that was there.
I have a different question to ask, based on some of the conversation. And that is, what kind of insurance is available for a field? Is there, for instance, flood insurance? Is there replacement insurance?
I have had FEMA replace a field before. I don't know the legal particulars, but that has happened. You know, and I, I know most of the municipalities I work with, they haven't pursued that.
So I, I could, I, I would recommend that, to your question, Mr. Mayor, you, you chat with Eric Byrne, and he can share with you in, in tremendous detail what's involved in maintaining and, and protecting the field, and what the issues have been with FEMA in the past, and whether or not that's available. I, I don't want to try to paraphrase it, because I'll get some part of it wrong, but that would be a really good resource. And he'll just tell you what his experience has been. But, but related to that, if, probably Mr. Nardone should speak to this, but it may be somebody else. Could you talk about when these water events occur? You talked earlier about cleaning and restoration. What, what is the turnaround time? What's involved? What is that experience like? We, we know it from the, our high school field, but that's a different, an older...
That's on the floodway, right?
It's a different, it's in a different place, and it's a different material. So I'm just wondering how it works with, with what you're proposing now.
Yeah, I'm, and, you know, what, what, what exactly will be involved is, you know, just depends on the nature of the, nature of the storm, the time of year, can, can impact that. You know, if it comes now in the fall, you get a lot more debris on the field than if it comes at, you know, in the summertime, per se. But generally, you know, washing the field off, you know, some, some, I wouldn't call it, you know, just washing with a hose, you know, depends again on, we don't expect the amount of debris to be very much, because we're at the edge of the floodplain. But that's, you know, some type of cleaning that would happen.
And is there an annual cleaning that goes on with the field, anyway?
A field like this, you, you would want to, you would want to get all the leaves off it in the fall, you know? You would, you would want to, you would want to clean it up, like you would, you know, like you would the natural field.
But there's no chemical cleaning? I know our high school field goes through a chemical cleaning, and there's a whole detoxification after a storm event. Not, is that a different product?
Yeah. I mean, it shouldn't really be necessary. I don't know what they're, exactly what they're cleaning floor for. If they're concerned about like, you know, bacteria or something, that's going to be gone. Just close the field for a sunny day, and you'll be, you know, UV will kind of take care of any of that on the surface, if there's sewage and so forth.
So I think, Mr. Mayor, you might want to just ask Eric Byrne about what that, what that looks like over at the high school, and maybe there's some comparison.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, I think I would also ask Greg to please ask our insurance agent if there's private insurance available.
And I do, and we can talk more about it, but in brief conversations with the school district, and even with some of the consultants, I mean, there is a, a very distinct and important difference between the location of this field and the location of the high school field, because of its being in the floodway, as opposed to in the edge of the floodplain. Part of it, and the reason for the tarp on the high school field, is because of the debris and the velocity of the debris that occurs during a storm event coming down the Blind Brook. But we'll, we'll be doing more investigation, and we are talking to the insurance broker in terms of, of coverage.
And, yeah, get the specifics from Peter in, in kind of doing that, you know, if, if they, if they adopt that new map, we've talked about that, you know, the elevation 12, we, we would build the field, proposing to build the field at 13, which is, you know, kind of a good buffer, you know, above 12. And then that's for, you know, and we would expect flooding from a 500-year storm, not 100-year storm, if you're looking at insurance.
And what's, we, we heard different things about, and maybe you spoke to us about this, spoke with us about this in June. I, I don't recall exactly. What is the lifespan of the particular product? I think we did talk about it, but now you've narrowed in on a particular product. What is the lifespan of these fields?
The, you know, the warranty is eight years. We'll see an owner like yourself replace them anywhere from 8 to 12 years, depending on the amount of use. I would expect this field to go at least 10, because of the shade that Kevin talked about, the not putting lights on it will extend its life by, you know, at least a year or two. So those, those factors should, should get you, you know, closer to 10.
And when we, so once we're out, call it 10 or, or 12, whatever it is, what is the, what is the cost? Because it's not the same as installing a whole new field. So what is, what's involved there? We heard some numbers earlier. I just don't know if they're...
Yeah. Now that, now that we've done a 60% design, I'd prefer to give you, you know, kind of a real 2023, 24 number.
Yeah.
I, you know, I would do that. I would send that to you. I would sort of calculate that tomorrow. But, you know, it, what's involved is, you know, a contractor that mobilizing, you know, removing the, the turf, sending it for recycling. And then, and then, you know, what we typically do is we would reuse the shock pad that we propose as part of the system. So only the carpet would, would leave. The shock pad would be removed and stockpiled on the side of the field. The base would be laser graded again, just to kind of freshen up the grades after, you know, eight to 10 years. Put the shock pad back with the new surface coming in.
David, just to change the topic a little, we've heard people refer to you as a lobbyist for the artificial turf industry. Could you respond to that characterization?
Yeah, I explained this before in public meeting, you know, I am a member and active in the Synthetic Turf Council, because it's, it's the industry organization for manufacturers, installers, builders, and consultants, you know, to kind of come together and to learn from one another. It's, you know, the biggest, the biggest asset, you know, the information I got from that group, I share with folks like yourselves. It gives me a lot of better information. It gives me contacts, so that I'm dealing directly with manufacturers. I'm not dealing with a local, you know, salesperson. That's, that's the big benefit. I'm, you know, I'm now have my own consulting business, and, you know, I'm not, not installing turf. I'm, you know, be happy to design a natural grass field for you, or I'd be happy to pave it and put in pickleball courts, if you'd like. You know, outdoor athletics is my expertise. And, you know, I pride myself on all the time I've put into, you know, the, the systems and understanding those systems. And, you know, that's, that's why, you know, I'm, I'm here with you tonight.
Were you ever a lobbyist, that is, and, and, and advocate for the industry with respect to legislation or the like?
No.
And I would ask the same of Peter and Kevin, like, do they install turfs?
I can start. I'm a PhD water resource engineer, and I do stormwater analysis and flooding analysis. I have no business in selling or installing turf fields. I look at this strictly from a construction, or some other elements within a, within a project play perspective. And I don't live in the community, so the aspects of, of the community are also not really included, anyway.
And, and GZA, what, what are your connections or ties to the synthetic turf world?
You're muted.
You're muted.
Hi. As far as I know, GZA has never been involved in a synthetic turf construction project. You know, our, our company, you know, speaking of PFOS, I mean, we're one of the most active practices in remedial engineering. We are, we are an environmental consultancy, and we have no ties whatsoever. And to follow David's point, if the city of Rye wanted us to analyze a, a natural turf system, and analyze the environmental impact of that, we would. And so we have, have zero skin in the game. We, we donate and, and do not contribute to any such industry, you know, areas.
And Peter's microphone is a little muffled, but he works for Rumble, who is our engineering firm, that has helped us study the whole watershed, and has come up with solutions and mitigation plans for our flooding issues.
Now, we have a couple of...
I, I just want to raise one more question, which, if they're not the right group, that's fine. They can say that.
I've got a question, too.
Okay. And that is, we, we heard some members of the public talk about injuries and stress fractures and the like. Is that something, Mr. Nardone, you're able to speak to in terms of this, this current product today? Or is anyone here able to speak to that, or is that something we take elsewhere?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a ton of, there's a ton, you know, there's a ton of information out there on, on traction and the various systems now, especially when we change, you know, to these new infills. So we're, we're looking at, you know, a test, a rotational resistance test is, is one of the tests we look at. You know, FIFA, who, FIFA, who provides standards for synthetic turf fields, they compare them to, to natural grass. And so they provide a rotational resistance guide, sort of a, you have to fall into certain parameters with that test. Places like the University of Tennessee have tested natural grass and synthetic turf. And so we take that, that guidance and that data, and then we, you know, we test the systems. And we make sure that that rotational resistance, that traction, you know, is in the range of, of high-quality natural grass. So, you know, the field that you'll install, if you choose to, will, will perform like a high-performance natural grass field. That's the thing about, you know, you can, you could spend as much money and put in a high-performance natural grass field and have what, you know, they have in the Champions League soccer fields, but you, you know, would be very difficult for you to maintain it that way. Putting in a synthetic turf field, you may have a better field than they have at, you know, Giants and Jets playoff. So, you know, we're, we're going to make sure that all of that safety data, all that traction testing, that's done, that's done as part of the installation. And, you know, we've looked at this, you know, infill, there are numerous fields now down with, with this product that, you know, there's lots of data we can, we can kind of look at.
One of the things I, I wanted to add to that, because I did a pretty extensive literature research on this, even though it doesn't fall under the ambit of SIKR specifically. And obviously, the data is all over there, but there was a recent study in the landslide, and I can provide this to, to the council. And I, I would just, you know, I'll actually just share my screen here, if I may.
Yeah. While you pull that up, Kevin, one, one last thing I wanted to make was that, you know, the biggest impact in, in, you know, when you talk about safety and your, and your kids going out on various fields, is, you know, they should be wearing shorter cleats, you know, shorter spikes. They should be wearing shoes that are made for, for turf. That's, that's kind of, that's a critical component. And there was just, there was just a article that was written about that.
That was actually what the Director of Field Construction at Princeton, in the, in the YouTube video that the Let the Kids Play group provided. That was his advice, too, that... That was his advice, too, that actually, he said that in professional football locker rooms, there are signs up all through the NFL, make sure you're wearing the right shoes.
Yeah, every year, there's a poster that goes up that says, don't, you don't wear these shoes, wear these shoes. And so you can, you know, the manufacturers respond to that clearly. And the, the other component to NFL study that was done a few years back was that, you know, most players have, you know, turf toe injuries and all these sort of different injuries. And, you know, something like 70% of the athletes were wearing shoes that were too small for them. Then, you know, since, you know, you fit, you, you, you need to get a shoe that's larger than, you know, when you try it on. You know, your feet swell when you run and recreate and play.
Yes. So, and a lot of data analysis nowadays, and, and this is, this is, you know, when we're in an era when data is easily accessible, you know, anybody can get data to prove one point or another, particularly on this where, you know, sampling techniques and how the studies were done, it's very difficult to differentiate and sort through all of it. So I found this study very interesting, which basically, they indicate there's been no statistical analysis of, of basically a comprehensive review, peer review of, of data on this. And basically, this study analyzed 1,400 separate studies, 67 full reports, and it, and the, and included a risk bias analysis. And basically, what the summary is, and I'll, I'll just read it, implications of all the available evidence, based on these results, artificial turf seems to be safe surfaces for football, which means soccer. As the overall injury rate incidence is low, further, studies, especially in amateurs, women and youth athletes are needed to have better estimates in these groups on the incidence of injuries. So the, obviously, the, the one aspect of that is professional sports are more analyzed. But I would note, those are higher-impact sports, you know, with larger athletes, you're going to have higher rates of incidence there. But I, I do note proper, you know, proper footwear and that sort of thing. But I'll provide this to, to council. And, you know, on the, on the whole, what this is indicating is the evidence does not indicate that the synthetic turf is a, is a source of unique differentiating injuries compared to, to grass surfaces. So.
Like you're saying, there's a lot of data out there on professional athletes and collegiate athletes, but, you know, kids playing on, you know, fields that are not properly maintained, there's not a lot of data out on that versus, versus, you know, a turf field.
I just wanted to make a brief comment, since that, we're talking about professional sports. And actually, the NFL Players Union are calling for all the NFL stadiums to move to grass fields. They're attributing a lot of their injuries to the artificial turf. And FIFA is requiring eight of 16 stadiums who are going to be hosting the 2026 World Cup matches to install natural grass surfaces for the tournament. So the professional athletes, including soccer players or football, are moving away from the artificial turf to natural grasses. So I think if it's good enough for the NFL and FIFA, it should be good enough for our kids.
You, you speak for the owners of the NFL? Thank you.
So actually, could, could you address that? I think in, in conversations now going way back, we spoke about the grass fields in professional stadiums and how they're maintained, and, and in fact, how, what those grass fields are, are rooted in, and how that is different or differentiates itself on a cost basis from a grass field we could install.
Yeah, most of those fields are grown in 100% sand, so all their nutrients is added by fertilization. You know, they're, you know, the play is absolutely limited, you know, so they, not only do they get the best water, the best fertilization, you know, a grounds crew that takes care of that one surface most, most times, or in a few, you know, they might take care of a few practice fields, depending on how close they are to the facility. So tremendous effort goes into that. The Players Association is, you know, that's a, that's a back and forth with the owners. You know, I'm sure they would prefer to play on it. You should see the, you know, the money that goes into Champions League fields in Europe is, you know, it's, it's amazing. And they have fields that go underground to grow and come back up like on an elevator. So, you know, we're talking about, yeah, different, different level. You know, FIFA has maybe as much, you know, there's only one group that probably has more money than FIFA.
Are there other questions on the dais for the experts now? There are a couple of residents who wanted to speak, and then I would ask the council if there are any immediate questions on the EAF or CAF. But Suzanne Clary wanted to speak again.
Thank you for your time. I wanted to address an issue that Councilman Henderson raised. I think you were trying to get at the question of alienation of parkland. Because when the field or the space, the land was acquired, it was supposed to be as recreational parkland. And so that is an important thing that I hope the council will consider, excuse me, is access to parkland. And the other thing I wanted to mention, too, is in 2002, when the city council also agreed to accept the money, part of the consideration was the fact that it was going to be grass, the fact that it was going to be natural materials. In effect, the city was acquiring additional inventory to fields and, and that it already had, it was creating a new field, all right, with the idea that it was going to be grass because it was next to wetlands. It was never envisioned that they were accepting the money, EQBA money from New York State, with the idea that it would ever be artificial. The purpose was for it to protect the wetlands and the buffer. So what we're doing is taking the original intent and changing that. And I think that's really important for the city council to consider, because when that acquisition was made, and I'll read from the resolution that was adopted by the city council in 2002, if I can find it on my phone here, I'll paraphrase it, is that the resolution said that the design took into account the consideration, I don't really find the exact language, of the neighbors. Let me read this, because this, this is the actual language of the resolution. Whereas the original design of the field, phones, was significantly modified by the committee to address a variety of neighbor, community character, historic preservation, and environmental concerns. So as recently as this week, the NAPHouse and the Rye Historical Society has submitted a letter saying that they have significant historic preservation concerns, and they want to be involved in the SECRE process, which should be allowed by the city council. And I don't know that that has happened yet. Also, you have a number of neighbors who have spoken tonight and previously, who have expressed concerns about community character, which do not seem to be addressed. I think every, we're not weighing in on whether, you know, pro or con synthetic turf fields will make it easier for kids to play more. Again, it goes back to, is it, is this the right place? Thank you so much.
Meg Cameron.
I wanted to comment on something that Mr. Nathan said, that also the previous speaker touched on, and that is community character and a, I forget what you called it, but you spoke a lot about this being an open space where people could play. Let's be real, this is a butt-ugly field that nobody uses for passive recreation. It is two blocks away, I live right near it. I am a big user of Rye Parks. I have never once in 35 years felt drawn to walk in there, except when I'm using the clothing drop-off. It is two blocks away from gorgeous Rye Town Park. That's where people go. I mean, let's talk about the real questions, like the couple in the back, they're not still here, who are worried that their house might be flooded anymore. That is completely legitimate. This beautiful piece of neighborhood character, oh, please, we see that it's going to be actually beautified by what these guys are planning to do.
We've heard a lot of conflicting opinions about other properties, too. Some people saying they're beautiful natural habitats, and then other people saying they're, they're garbage dumps. So, I mean, you know, everybody, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, I think.
Okay, well, thank you, though, all those who spoke.
I don't have questions for the, for the experts. I have some questions for our team here.
I have one more question on the flood, floodplain thing, too.
They prepared these documents, right?
Yeah. The, GZA in particular prepared the EAF and CAF. So if your questions are on those, are they? But you're free to ask whatever questions you want.
Laurie's got some questions.
Let me, I just, and I'm expecting that we're getting more documents for this January, oh, January 6th, geez. It's late, December 6th meeting.
Can I just, the, the documents, the more documents that the council will receive, I'll say, are really limited to a negative declaration, a coastal consistency resolution or finding, and a resolution adopting those. So the application, from our perspective, is complete.
It's done, this is done.
Okay, I just want to be clear. So it's going to be identical to what is in this, in this folder right now, this binder?
There might be some slight changes, but I can't say it's going to be word for word, but.
If you want to amend it, if you want to propose something to be.
Right, no, I just want to make sure I understand, because again, it's been very unclear. So, because I didn't prepare to, I thought we were going to go through everything, because we are the agency here, right? We, we sign off on this.
Yes.
And after, and considering the history, Josh, of going through these, we want to get this right, right? So I just didn't know that that's what you were going to be asking for tonight. I thought we were having a final version of this for us to review after the planning commission process. So that's, so that's my question.
So the version of the EAF and the CAF you have before you?
Mm-hmm.
Are the versions that were in front of the planning commission?
Right.
I will say that there will likely be some slight revisions, clarifications, but in substance, they are the documents that are, are completed for your review.
Right. So we should go through their memo, though, if we have questions.
Their, the planning commission's memo?
Yes, because that's the more up to date.
Didn't we do that when we're doing the SECRE? I mean, shouldn't we do that all at once, instead of doing some of it tonight? I mean, these documents are ridiculous to read through to begin with. But, I mean, shouldn't we be doing this all in one process when we're reviewing the SECRE? I feel like we're being rushed through this whole thing, frankly.
It's late.
I think you're trying to rush us through the whole thing, Mr. Mayor.
If people have questions tonight, we have our experts here tonight. We'll also have our experts here next, next time.
I mean, it's kind of, it's 10:20, and then.
But I, I do.
I don't have any questions tonight.
I just, I have the one question for the, about the county, Josh, and then.
Okay.
The county memo, while they're here.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
I'm just, I was just confirming that if they're going to be back next week, I will defer any questions on this until they're back, and Laurie should go. And then I have a couple of questions for Kristen, but we don't, so why don't you go, Laurie?
It's just, it's really, I just, we got a document, November 28th, from the county, weighing in with this, I don't think we've talked about this yet. So I looked at it today, and they, it says, we strongly recommend, they've talked about the flood, special flood hazard area again, we strongly recommend against filling within floodplains without providing for compensatory flood storage. Is this compensatory flood storage? Is this what we mean by what the, the field machinery will provide? Or is there some other compensatory flood storage that they're recommending?
I can speak to this. So the general language that says that, you know, the county would advise against filling for the floodplain is very well understood, and it's, it's common sense. Now, there is regulations on, on, both for the city of Rye, as well as for most communities that are part of the FEMA program, that allows for development to occur within a floodplain. And, and there is a specific procedure to evaluate the impact, and this is what we're doing here. It's not, you know, to, to, to advise against is very generic, and it guides towards that exact process, which is being implemented here. We're developing an understanding of existing conditions and the impact of the proposed conditions, and if those impacts are within a certain limit, the project may proceed. And here, we establish that using those exact procedures as recommended by FEMA and the state of New York, we are not seeing any impact. And, and so, you know, I, I've read the, the letter, and I understand the recommendation. I think that we are fully meeting the conservative.
So maybe we could get an email that says that, just so I can be sure I understand it? Just a quick email outlining this, because I don't have this in writing anywhere. Please.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yes.
Thank you. That was all, Josh.
I have a very simple question on page 10 of 13 in what I think is the EAF. So there's reference to, has there been a reported spill at the proposed project site? Or have any remedial actions been conducted? And there's apparently something in a spills incident database? I don't know if, is that a question for GZA?
Yes, I can address that. Yes, there were actually two spills associated with the previous nursery. One was a fuel tank, and, and I believe one was a gasoline storage tank, that during, like, basically, pre-2002, so going back over 20 years, probably in preparation for, for acquiring the site from the nursery, there was a phase two done, sort of contemporaneous with that, right around 2001, 2002, prior to the, the, the resolution for the, for the athletic, for the Rye Nursery Field. And what that phase two indicated is that they felt that the reviewer indicated that DEP would have no specific remedy for it. And, and so basically, the, the area where those tanks were at is back where the parking lot is at. And the site has since been excavated, and the contamination that was characterized in that was sort of limited in terms of exceedances of state requirements. So there were, basically, there was indicated to be no potential for significant risks to human health. Whether or not, you know, that document was done a very, very long time ago, you know, and the field has since been redeveloped. But based on that characterization, you know, the site was developed, and the consultant at that time, I think it was Malcolm Purney, did, did not see a rationale to remediate.
Thank you.
Did, I'm just, on that page at the top, it says, is the site presently used by members of the Community for Public Recreation, and the answer is yes, which is yes. Currently used as athletic, as, as athletic field, and just from what we heard tonight back in June, I, I think the use is broader than that, but I don't know what the, I don't know what the relevance of that is, or how that answer, truly a technical question, is what's the scope of what you've written there or proposed?
So there's two, two ways to, it doesn't really impact one way or another, whether it's passive.
it's passive recreational or, or a, or an active recreational field. However, in terms of the improvement, so there's the project area, and there's, there's the actual improvement proposed, and improvement, or the rehabilitation, or the, however you want to characterize the project, it's, it's on the athletic field. So, that's, that's what that references, or the intent.
Because there will be no other area of disturbance, is that right?
Right, correct, correct.
Okay, well, in the absence of further questions for the expert team, I'm going to invite you all to enjoy whatever remains of your evenings, as, as we will ours.
Absolutely. Thank you so much to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
So Josh, you had some questions for Chris.
You know, somebody said earlier tonight, and, and I just want to, just some clarity on, on the planning commission process, that there was no public comment at the planning commission meetings. If, Kristen, what's the norm? And, and how is this, how is this the same or different? Just some context would be helpful.
There was no formal public hearing at the planning commission. They also did not entertain informal public oral comment. They did, they were the recipient of dozens of comments, they reviewed them, consultants addressed a lot of the comments in the course of the, the discussion with the planning commission, but there was no formal comment period, so that, that was a accurate statement. There was no formal oral comment period. How this does or does not differ from the planning commission, the planning commission's normal process, here, their, their scope or their jurisdiction was limited to rendering an advisory and opinion on the LWRP consistency, which was required by law. There is no public hearing required by that, either at the state level or in our local code. Similarly, with respect to the council's request for a wetland advisory opinion, there is no public hearing required at any level either. So, the planning commission kind of did a work session type, or workshop, I should say, and discussed it amongst themselves and the consultants, and in, in a public session, but no public comment.
Several workshops with the public present, and we followed the same procedure we followed for the Forest Avenue sidewalks, which we also looked at the LWRP for that, and the salt shit, you know, in, in the last year. And we followed exactly the same procedure.
So the first time the public is commenting on their views of this property, or not the first time, but the place for the public to comment on this is here at the council. And so, our plan, when we talk about what the planning commission is opining on, it's, it's a narrow scope of, it's a piece of the puzzle. It's not, it's not the same as when they come and give us, if, if we'd made them lead agency and they were just handling this.
Right.
They're not playing that fuller role.
Their, the scope of their jurisdiction was really wetlands and LWRP.
Okay. So it doesn't affect, it doesn't incorporate the, all the sort of cultural community, neighborhood thinking that otherwise might go into a broader, that, that all rests with us?
Correct. The scope that's currently in front of the city council, the, the scope of your SEACR review or overall review of the project is much broader than the planning commission.
Got it, okay. And, and, and so that would be the place for neighbors, Neighborhood, Rye Historical Society, their, their comments about wanting to be involved in this process, this is the place for that, as opposed?
This is, the city council's the right body to handle those questions versus the planning commission.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, I would move along to, members may be heard, and, and thank you all for participating in, in our discussions on the field. So, members may be heard. Bruce I think Bruce may have.
May have left.
May have left. And Alan Beechey?
Please, I have a question as well.
Okay. So, we'll move along to a resolution to waive parking restrictions and parking fees in all downtown parking lots, and Purchase Street on December 6th through December 9th for Hanukkah, and December 20th through 23rd, plus December 26th for Christmas in Kwanzaa for 2023. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need a roll call for that?
To waive parking fees?
You know, I would actually do a roll call, thank you, Carolina.
Councilwoman Fontanis?
Aye.
Councilman Henderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Nathan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Suzas absent, Councilman Stacks absent, Mayor Cohen.
Yes. Resolution designating the days and time of regular meetings of the city council for 2024, setting January 10, 2024 is the first regular meeting. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a consent agenda, all nice things, Midland Fair Parade, and that's the Midland School Fair, that's April 27th. The Milton School PTA to have two to three food trucks for the fair, good idea. That's also on the April 27th, in consideration of a request by the Rye Little League to approve a parade to kick off opening day, April 13th, 2024. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Old business, new business. Hearing none. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.